All right, Brian, I think we're good.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting for October 26, 2020. We have a full agenda for tonight. We actually have several items at the top of the agenda, but before we do that, we are going to go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. We're going to go ahead and do the invocation and pledge, followed by the roll call before we get into all of the items. So let's all stand for the invocation. Melody, who is, Melody, who is helping us with that? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. I was going to take it tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Don.
Lou.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Zoomed on right here. I just wanted to, I know we're kind of in a transition period tonight. It's kind of our, last night for some of our council people, and it's kind of melancholy and sad. And then next week, we've got the, or November 2nd, we have the incoming council. So I talked to Sanford's, I wanted to give the invocation and not to say, I talked to Sanford's governmental accounting class one time, and they asked me what the most challenging part about being accountant in this, and I said it's because your CEO and leadership can change every four years, which is kind of unusual in a lot of companies you work for. You don't expect the top management to change. So fortunately, we've been in a period of consistency here for my time, and we're changing, but change is not always bad, and it's good. It just can be scary and familiar. So I just wanted to say that life progresses on, change happens, but Ecclesiastes 3:13 says, "Your word says there's a time for everything, a season for every activity under the heavens, a time to be born, a time to die, a time to kill, and a time to heal, a time to tear down, and a time to build." The word shows me that there's a time for change. It is natural for every activity to have its allotted time. Lord, help me to be comfortable with this time of change. So if you could just bow your heads, I'm just going to say a little prayer in addition to that. Father God, we just come to you tonight, and we just lift the city of Homewood up. Father, thank you for the citizens, its residents, and Father, and just this council. We pray for everybody that's here tonight. We pray for the people that are, that this will be their last meeting. Father, we know that they're still going to be involved with the city, and we appreciate their service to the city, and we just pray that your protection and blessing over them as they transition, Father, and we're just thankful for the memories and the time that we've had. We pray for the new council that'll be coming on, Father. We just ask that you just be with them and help it to be a peaceful transition, and Father, and just help everybody come together and just know that Homewood is going to continue to be an awesome city, and that you're still on the throne, and that you have Homewood in your hands, Father. And we look to you during this time of change for you just to be with us, comfort us, and protect us in your precious name, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And just as a reminder, we are, we are still using masks and encouraging social distancing as always, hopefully not as always, always, but certainly for the time, time period, and encourage everyone to exercise those precautions. And we do have several, before we get into really the agenda, we have several, I'll refer to them as pre-meeting items. One of them, I'm going to begin with the Brookwood Mall item. I think we have a couple of representatives and developers here with Brookwood Mall. If you guys can come forward, I think, as everyone knows, Brookwood Mall has sort of been in a bit of a, I'll say, a state of transition, and folks have contacted the city, and frankly, they are working on the transition plan, I will say, and they have asked, and we agreed to let them have a few minutes tonight, primarily because they want to schedule some public meetings. They want to meet with the public so they can start, I'll let them speak for themselves, but I think start a discussion on what can be done with this very important property for our city. And so with that, I'm seeing, do we have, Alex, I'm sorry, do you have something to add?
No, no, but I was just telling Don, you've got something.
Yeah, I'm passing these out. Let me get one in just a second. So I can, and so do I, Mark?
Yes.
Yes, got you, Mark. Pleasure to have you. And so I will turn it over to you, and I know importantly, I'm going to let you have just a few minutes here, but importantly, we want to, most importantly, mention the dates and your public outreach plan, if you will, sir.
Right. Well, thank you for your time. We are, let me introduce myself. I'm Mark Stewartman with Arlington Properties, and pardon me, Joe Sander with Coyers International of Alabama, and we're here to ask for your help. We're very excited to have Brookwood Mall under contract, and this image, well, when it's up, this image is simply a starting point. It's a picture of what it could be, and Brookwood is such a critical component to Homewood, to Mountain Brook, to our region, that we're really asking for your help in getting feedback from Homewood specifically. And so our vision is to create a great place. And what we mean by that is a central public lawn or plaza where, that's surrounded by amazing local restaurants, great boutique retailers, where there's a mix of hotels, a mix of new office space. We want to connect Lakeshore Trail to Jimson Trail, make that connection safer and stronger and more clear. And then we also believe strongly that there should be a mix of diverse housing at Brookwood, both for sale and rental. And so again, what we're here to do tonight is ask for your help in setting up meetings with, just with the city. So we had, we have four dates in mind, and once we finalize it, we'll have a flyer that we can send out to everyone, but we were hoping to meet.
And I think we'll be happy to put that, I'll speak to the new account, we'll be happy to put that flyer on our website to help with the public outreach.
Great. Thank you. We were wanting to hold initial meetings on this Thursday, maybe in this room, and then the following Thursday after the election, and then the following Tuesday and Thursday of the next week. So that'd be October 29th, the 5th, the 10th, and the 12th. And again, at those meetings, it's our goal just to hear from, from you all and from the citizens of Homewood what they would like to see happen at Brookwood. And as far as locations, we would like to request maybe use of this room for Thursday, and then the thought might be that the recreation center would be more convenient to a lot of folks, so maybe the subsequent meetings could be there, but we look to your guidance on those locations.
Do you, do you have times, ranges?
We're thinking 5:30 to 7:00 in the evenings.
Okay.
With doors opening around 5:30, and then a very brief kind of overview, a little bit more detail than I gave, but a very brief overview. And then from there, we just picture kind of breaking up and having individual questions and just really a dialogue about what needs to happen with Brookwood. But again, it's our goal to create a place that reflects Homewood and that becomes a destination both for our generation and for the next, so that in 50 years, you don't have, you don't have to redevelop the whole thing again.
Okay. Wonderful. Well, since I am still in power through the 29th, I don't think though, unless there's any objection, letting you use City Hall for that first meeting on the 29th from 5:30 to 7:00. And I guess it'll be a little bit of work in progress as places from there, but, so we'll have your first meeting, and we'll post this on the website, and I'll let you do whatever y'all need to do to get the word out yourselves, but, because we certainly want to have as much public involvement and discussion, support, and opposition to be heard on all levels for what can potentially happen to this property. So I don't know if anyone else has any.
Just one real quick question. Ms. Salter, Thursday, this Thursday shouldn't be, it.
This is the 29th.
Yeah.
I don't know anything we have here that night.
Okay. And do y'all want it in here?
I think that'd be great unless you, you think there's a better location.
Well, no, we've done, you know, we've done other ones in here, whether Greensprings and things like that, so I mean, I think this is a logical spot. And then I'm sure we can check with Berkeley about the rec center. The only one that would be, might be a problem up here, I would think, I know there's some meetings on Tuesday nights, and they've got one Tuesday on the list.
Yes, sir. We have the Tuesday and Wednesday of the first of the month, we have BEZ and Planning Commission, but that's the only thing that I know of that we're at.
Planning Commission moved to November 9th. BZA is the one that is coming up.
Voice over buzz.
Okay. Is that God?
All right. And all I would say, just because, because this won't be a, I mean, it's open to the public, but it will really be a private meeting, we're granting you use of our facilities, but to exercise appropriate, spreading everybody out.
Absolutely.
And masks, because we certainly don't want to encourage big crowds coming in. I assume they'll, I don't know how big a crowd it'll be, but it, hopefully it won't be too challenging. And you've got, looks like you've got four opportunities here, so that perhaps can be a good start.
Will you need any IT, will you need me to have any type of IT or?
You know, no, we'll have, and I'll weave this with you just for, if you'd like.
Yeah, be great. Thank you.
We'll just have one of these plans, because again, this is a starting point. All we know is that it won't end up looking like this. You know, I mean, it's, it's such a big property, and we're truly looking for feedback, and this is what it could be, but we hope to have a great central public area, restaurants, you know, again, a great mix of uses. What do we need to do to, I guess, do I need to follow with you to?
I'm going to give you my email address. Okay, we'll make sure the doors are open, because they normally shut at 4:30, and I've already had a public records request for that drawing since you said it, so I'll see if you could email me that drawing.
Sure.
Yeah.
It came on my phone.
And then the other dates and locations, just coordinate with you, I imagine, or?
Do you already know what they are? I had to walk out for a second.
Yeah.
I just heard the 29th.
Okay. Oh, yes.
If you'll email me tomorrow, or this evening or tomorrow, we'll coordinate.
Great.
If you have, certainly, let me say, if you have more information on your locations that you want to announce right now, I mean, certainly, or is it a work in progress?
We are hoping to have one or two of them at the rec center, if that's available, but it sounds like that may be a bit more of a work in progress.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. At least we know, again, the 29th next week here in our council chambers, 5:30 to 7:00.
Yeah, it's this Thursday, the 29th here.
Oh, I'm sorry, this week, 29th. I was extending my ring of caro, but, all right. So Thursday, 5:30 to 7:00.
Yeah.
The following week, November 5th.
Why don't we just, why don't we just have that here if it's open, and then we can publish dates and locations for the future ones after that?
Okay.
Is this a public, is this a public meeting? I need to notice, or is this not?
No, you do not have to notice. This is their, their, this is, we're helping them reach out to the publics. We're all we're doing.
Which we appreciate. Thank you very much.
Sure thing. And so, so, and we will permit them to help reach out to public, put it on our website. And again, 29th here in City Hall, 5:30 to 7:00. November 5th, looks like potentially we're going to put it here at City Hall, 5:30 to 7:00. And then two more follow-up meetings on November 10th and November 12th. I wrote those down, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, very exciting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And hold it. Got a couple before you leave here. Let me go with Mr. Higginbotham first, Wolverton, and then Andrews.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, I know I'm a short timer here, but, and it sounds like it's already going to be addressed. Ms. Salter, if you could forward that image onto the council as well. That was what I was going to ask for, is see if this was in a PDF or JPG somewhere where I could get a copy.
This is the first time.
I'm literally planning on following this and handing this to my successor as I leave today, so I wanted to get an image rather than this.
If you don't, if you'll, can you send it to me on that email whenever you can?
I'll send a JPG and a PDF.
Thank you so much.
And again, this is a starting point. We want your feedback. We want to, you know, this is, there's much to figure out, so.
Got you. Mr. Wolverton.
I was just going to ask if there was any reason why Rosewood Hall downstairs wouldn't be an option for meeting, and then that way we don't have to coordinate making sure the elevators are unlocked and all that, too, but.
Well, we, we can shake with Rosewood Hall if that's what you prefer, but we still have to unlock the building. The building's still locked, but they, they may have it.
Let's, for, just for sure we're here, let's keep it City Hall, but I would agree with Mr. Wolverton, if it is going to be a larger crowd.
Yeah, it's a bigger space downstairs.
Not that we have to be prepared for both spaces, but if you have determination of that, and you need a bigger space and more spread out, Rosewood Hall could help provide that, which is right below us, okay?
Great.
All right. Hold on a second. Mr. Andrews, and then.
Mark, I was going to offer, those of us who have newsletters and distribution lists, if you want to get us any information for the meeting on Thursday, we can send that out as early as tonight.
Yeah, thank you. We will, Melody, I'll send you images and an updated flyer with dates and times.
Okay, that's great.
Great.
And Mr. Walton.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to simply say that I would appreciate, I think it's a great idea to explore what has been or become almost a empty building. However, I'm a little bit apprehensive of all meetings solely being held at city, in city facilities because of the look that that gives, that we're encouraging this, because this will be before us for a rezon at some point and, and a public hearing, so just a little bit apprehensive to that effect.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I will say, just for the, for purposes of public, this is really just a venue for public feedback. This is certainly not public support, I mean, or city council support for this project at all. This is city council support for obtaining as much public feedback.
Absolutely.
At these four meetings, but I would agree, you know, to the extent you can find some other locales that can still meet your, your needs, great, but.
Right.
But more, most importantly, just state from.
Yeah, public input's great.
From here, this is about getting public input. This is not about city council support for this proposal in any shape at this point. So, Mr. Wolver, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Higginbotham, sorry.
Sorry. Pleasure pointing to me. What I was going to add to that, I think that's actually a good observation, Mr. Walton, you made, and is, and it occurs to me, is there not a space at Brookwood somewhere where you could have one of these meetings?
We, we're, I think, I think the answer is yes, we're looking into it, but I think that'd be a great solution. So we'll have the first two dates and locations, and then the other two will be TBD, and if we need more after that, we'll have more.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck with your venture.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it forward, and thank you for reaching out to the public. I appreciate that. All right. Mr. Walton.
One last comment. Do you have this under contract already, or is it pending? It is under contract, yes. So we have everything to the east of Target, with the exception of the office building, and Macy's is under contract. Did I say that correctly, Joe? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Next, we're going to, I think we have a presentation of a proclamation to recognize October as Physical Therapy Month. Mr. Wolverton, I'll have your name on this.
Or the mayor. It is everything that it sounds like. And I have a fellow Homewood PT here, Corinne Chapman.
Mr. Wolver, get her to sign in so I can make sure I have her name for the.
You want her to sign?
It's right on the podium. I didn't know if she was going to accept it or not.
She, she gets to accept it. Oh, my goodness.
That's great. And you're making her sign in?
Melody made me.
Mail.
We recognize the people that you give the proclamation to, sir. I need her name, but I could have gotten it from Mr. Wolverton later.
Y'all are great.
Consistency, consistency.
Absolutely. We're good.
Thank you.
Counselor, thank you. Y'all can slip right over here. Thank y'all for being here. So we have a proclamation for Physical Therapy Month. Don't read over my shoulder in case I miss a word. Kidding with you. Whereas there are 2,997 active physical therapists, 2,809 physical therapist assistants, over 430 physical therapy students, and over 250 physical therapist assistance students in the state of Alabama. Whereas the practice of physical therapy seeks to improve the health and quality of life of individuals in society, and whereas physical therapists are movement experts who optimize quality of life through prescribed exercise, hands-on care, and patient education. And whereas physical therapists provide an alternative to pain and expensive surgery in many cases. And whereas physical therapists manage or eliminate pain without mediation and its side effects. And whereas physical therapists and physical therapist assistants, easy for you to say, empower people to become active participants in their own care. The state of Alabama allows physical therapists to treat patients without a physician's referral under varying circumstances referred to as direct access. And whereas the education and clinical experience required to become a licensed physical therapist provides the judgment needed to establish a diagnosis, determine if consultation with another healthcare provider is necessary, along with designing an individualized plan of care for the patient. So now therefore, I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the city of Homewood, hereby proclaim October 2020 as Physical Therapy Month. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you all, Mayor, and don't get, I'm going to let you rest a little bit before we do some more proclamations here in just a moment, so.
Hey, sir, we have to do roll call tape before we call.
Oh, thank you for that. Let's do that. Let's do that. Melody, please.
Okay. Yes, sir. All righty. For the 10/26 council meeting, Mr. Walton.
Here.
Mr. Thames.
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Mr. Wolverton.
Here.
Mr. McCleskey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Andrews.
Here.
Mr. Harden.
Here.
And President Wright.
Here.
Everybody's here. You got a quorum.
Thank you very much. And so we now have our, ready for presentation of a budget appropriation to the Red Mountain Park. It's actually going to be, I tell you, let's go ahead and approve this first, if we can. It's going to be 26/10/20, which is a request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for services and pay a fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation for Red Mountain Park. This coming to us from Councilor Andrews and Robert Burgett, our finance director, assistant city clerk, and Melody Salter, our city clerk and assistant finance director. First, I think we'll begin with a report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the, the finance committee did not actually meet on this, but I will make the recommendation.
I'll second that.
This is under new, new business, but.
We did meet many times under the budget.
Exactly. But, but I appreciate you yielding to me, because it is in the, it is in the budget, and if I don't pass this, Mrs. Andrews will have my head. So, no, we, no, seriously, we did, we did discuss this during budget hearings, and it is in the budget. It was approved. It's in line item 01-11-575116, and it's for $25,000, and really, it's just for, to authorize the mayor to sign the contract, and I would make that motion now.
All right. Thank you. So that's a motion from Mr. Jones. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that contract approval for the mayor is approved to Mrs. Andrews. I'll let you come forward and take the floor to present, more importantly, the practical part of the motion is to present a check, budget appropriation of Red Mountain Park.
I want to welcome TC Macklemore to our meeting. TC is the executive director of Red Mountain Park. I want to thank Councilor Higginbotham, Mayor McBrayer, and we have council-elect Carlos Aliman here as well from the foundation, big supporters of the park, and I can't thank you enough. Homewood has the highest zip code that visits the park, and this year, the park has seen record numbers to the tune of, and by the way, Mr. Macklemore is a Homewood resident now. We welcome him and his family to Homewood.
I am. Ward 2, no doubt.
Yeah. That's right. It's eight minutes from work, or the park. So, yeah, this year has been a boon for park visitation. Year-to-date, well, year through September, we've seen 120,000 guests. Last year total, we saw 125,000 in the full year, so we will certainly set a new record for annual attendance at Red Mountain Park this year, because so many places are closed, people are trying to figure out something to do with their kids, like me today. I went to Red Mountain Park with my sick daughter. She doesn't have COVID, she has an ear infection. But it's really been a respite for our entire community, and this year in particular, and I do want to express my gratitude to this body and to Mayor McBrayer for, for this appropriation in this year in particular. You may have seen that we've been dealt some cuts elsewhere, and it is not lost on me, nor is it lost on our board or our commission that Homewood maintained level funding. That, it illustrates to me as a, as the executive director and as a Homewood resident, the importance of green space in our community, and it's just, it's a really significant thing. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You have the opportunity.
Yeah, I'm looking for my school standing on. You promised me last year you would.
Well, yeah, I was a brand-new father a year ago. So the world had kind of worn me down.
Yeah, so Jennifer posted this picture last year on Facebook, and the only comments you could get was, "Look how tall this guy is."
We weren't wearing face masks last year.
Yeah. That's right.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mayor, as I gave you fair warning, we do have a few other proclamations for tonight. A melancholy night for a lot of us who are, it's going to be our last meeting, and certainly not our last service to the city of Homewood, but perhaps our last official service as council members, and, and Mayor, I'm going to see if you can help us out with, with whoever you have there first. I'll let you take it.
We have Mr. Higginbotham first. Mike, if I can get you to come down?
Yes, you're going to have to.
Come on, Mike. Perfect. So we have a proclamation for you tonight, Mike, thanking you for your service to the city of Homewood. Whereas Councilor Mike Higginbotham and his family are residents of Homewood who've made the decision to become more involved in our community by running for city council. And whereas Councilor Higginbotham was first elected as the Ward 2 Place 1 city council representative in 2016, he served from 2016 to 2020. And whereas while on the city council, Mike Higginbotham served on the finance committee and special issue committee. Councilor Higginbotham also served as the council liaison to the Homewood Environmental Commission from 2016 to 2020. And whereas Councilor Higginbotham runs the West Homewood Facebook page and is also involved with the Homewood Public Library Board, the Hall Kent PTO, and the School Systems Educational Advisory Committee, along with the Forest Brook Community Group. And whereas Councilor Higginbotham will always be known for his passion for the community, which is demonstrated in everything he says and does, and for his unquenchable desire to fully understand every project he's involved with for the betterment of the community. And whereas Councilor Higginbotham has made his mark as a council member by working diligently to make the city of Homewood a safe and inclusive place for all of its residents, and these efforts will be felt throughout the city for many years to come. Now therefore, I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the city of Homewood, hereby publicly recognize and honor Councilor Higginbotham for his dedication and work on behalf of citizens of Homewood, and for making this city a better place in which to live, work, and play. Mike, congratulations.[1740.12] efforts will be felt throughout the city for many years to come. Now therefore I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, hereby publicly recognize and honor Counselor Higginbotham for his dedication and work on behalf of citizens of Homewood, and for making this city a better place in which to live, work, and play. Mike, congratulations.
You can smile, smile with your eyes.
Smile, smile.
Smile. Ready? One, two. It's taking off your faces, so you're good.
Alright, thank you.
Congratulations, man.
Congratulations, Mr. Higginbotham. And that's a real big congratulations, by the way.
Councilman Thames?
You need, you need to get that family up there with you, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thames' family, come on, bring those children, let's go, boys.
Alright, great.
I'm glad y'all could come tonight, be here with your dad and your husband.
Goodness.
Well, it's important, uh, to have your family's support, so.
Absolutely.
And I know you've always had that, so.
Yes, sir.
Brett, we've got a proclamation tonight honoring you for your service, uh, on the city council, whereas Counselor Thames and his family are residents of Homewood, who made the decision to become more involved in our community by running for city council. And whereas Counselor Brett Thames was first elected as the Ward One Place Two City Council Representative in 2012, he served two terms, with the first 2012 to 16, then re-elected for the 2016 to 2020 term. And whereas while on the council, Brett Thames served as Chair of the Planning and Development Committee from 2016 to 2020. Counselor Thames served as a member of both the Finance Committee and the Public Safety Committee from 2016 to 2020. Counselor Thames was the council liaison to the Planning Commission from 16 to 20. And whereas Counselor Thames will always be known for his passion for the community, which is demonstrated in everything he says and does, and for his unquenchable desire to fully understand every project he's involved with for the betterment of the community. And whereas Counselor Thames has made his mark as a council member by working diligently to make the City of Homewood a safe and inclusive place for all of its residents, and these efforts will be felt throughout the city for many years to come. So now therefore I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, hereby publicly recognize and honor Counselor Thames for his dedication and work on behalf of citizens of Homewood, and for making this city a better place in which to live, work, and to play. Thank you, Brett.
Thanks, Ray. Congratulations.
Right, so don't, I'm gonna sit this even though, uh, judging on my photography.
Congratulations, Mr. Thames.
It was all we could.
I wanted to be first.
Good. This is Wright, thank you for being here. And last, but certainly not least, um, here honor our, uh, friend and president, Peter Wright, for his service to the community. Whereas Counselor Wright and his family are residents of Homewood, who made the decision to become more involved in our community by running for the city council. And whereas Counselor Wright was appointed as the city council representative in February of 2011 for Ward Five Place Two, and served until the end of the term in 2012. Counselor Wright was elected to the 2012 to 16 term and served as President Pro Tem. Counselor Wright became a council president on November 4th, 2019. And whereas while on the council, Peter Wright served as Chair of the Public Works Committee and was a member of the Finance Committee from 2016 to 2019. As city council president, Mr. Wright served as the council liaison to the Homewood Board of Education. And whereas Counselor Wright will always be known for his passion for the community, which is demonstrated in everything he says and does, and for his unquenchable desire to fully understand every project he's involved with for the betterment of the community. And whereas Counselor Wright has made his mark as a council member by working diligently to make the City of Homewood a safe and inclusive place for all of its residents, and these efforts will be felt throughout the city for many years to come. So now therefore I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, hereby publicly recognize and honor Counselor Wright for his dedication and work on behalf of the citizens of Homewood, and for making this city a better place in which to live, work, and to play. Peter, congratulations.
they didn't add to the proclamation that whereas you still hold the record for the fastest committee meeting in the history of Homewood, so.
Which shall never be broken.
Holding a hand down there, for whatever.
I believe that record is like eight seconds. Thank you. Mayor, we're gonna throw it right back at you, okay? You've been up here reading enough, you get up here, my friend. And while you're walking up here, let me just say a couple of things about our mayor, it's not that we, uh, we all know Mayor McBrayer, he has been serving for a long time, and he has done some incredible, wonderful service for our city over all the years. Does it go back to 2004?
2000.
2000. Ladies and gentlemen, that is, that is commitment and public service to our city, and that is to be admired in, in my book, um, it truly is, and Mayor, thank you. Thank you, and I want to thank you, just one other thing before I start reading, I'm not gonna belabor here, one thing that you've always honored from the very first day I began, and I have so thoroughly enjoyed my 10 years here with you, 11, almost 11 years here with you as the mayor, is number one, the, really the success in our city has, has done from just about A to Z, uh, we've been blessed and lucky, and it doesn't happen, you know, by chance, um, and it's been a, a lot of good things and, and that have fallen our way. But one thing you've taught me, and it's that you've always honored, and you continue to honor, and I hope this carries through, I know it will with the new council, is we are neighbors, we are neighbors. We are neighbors to each other as council members, we are neighbors to our residents, and residents, we are your neighbors. We should all communicate, treat each other like neighbors, because that is one thing that this mayor has upheld every moment and every day that I have served with him, and I respect you and honor you for that, because I think it is an important, uh, example you have set for all of us to follow, and thank you for that. Now, I did go on and on, so hang in there as I read your proclamation, my friend. Whereas the City of Homewood has profoundly benefited throughout the 12 years of leadership and vision from Scott McBrayer, who served as mayor from November 2008 to November 2020. And whereas during Mayor Scott McBrayer's tenure, the city saw new houses sprawl across the landscape, as well as a litany of new businesses and exciting new community fixtures like the revitalization of the city parks, new public safety center, new downtown hotel, new middle school, et cetera. And whereas Mayor Scott McBrayer also credited fellow staff and employees at the City of Homewood numerous volunteers, as well as local schools, residents, and businesses for their willingness to work together for the continued benefit of this city. And whereas throughout his tenure, Mayor Scott McBrayer served this prosperous time in Homewood as a noble, thoughtful example of what our community strives to be, rooted in strong values, forward-thinking, down-to-earth, and perhaps most notably, genuine and wonderful leadership example. Whereas being elected mayor in 2008, Scott McBrayer also served eight years on the Homewood City Council, and thus has contributed nearly 20 years of overall service to this community. Whereas we as the city are and will always be immeasurably grateful for the mayoral tenure of Scott McBrayer, which demonstrated vision and hard work, friendliness and compassion, and an unwavering commitment to propelling our city ever forward in exciting new directions. Now therefore, we, the 2016 through 2020 City Council of the City of Homewood, do hereby congratulate and deeply thank Scott McBrayer for his invaluable service to our community. You have been a true asset to the city, and we appreciate being able to rely on you both personally and professionally over the past 20 years, my friend. Thank you and congratulations. That's an example for, uh, our future city council, and, um, and thank you, Mayor, again for, for the example. Alright, we're gonna continue, uh, into the rest of our very exciting agenda for tonight, and please understand any of you all who wish to exit now, uh, you can sit around for five or 10 minutes, you can leave right now, please know just, uh, where we're gonna head. So with that, I think our next item of business, Ms. Salter, is, um, approval of the reading of the minutes, and, um, um, and I'm gonna go entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from September 28. I'm gonna go ahead and put them all together unless there's objections, if anyone wants to bring any of them out of order, but we have three of them, one of them was very short, but, uh, reading of the minutes from September 28, October 12th, and October 13th, I will entertain a motion for approval.
To move.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Thames, and one, uh, do you have a question, Ms. Smith? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so those minutes, uh, do stand approved. We are gonna carry over the board vacancies and appointments and setting interviews for, um, y'all have fun, uh, is it?
Thanks a lot.
Is it 11 or 10?
I think it's 10 or 11.
10, 11, okay, whatever it may be, um, so, uh, seriously, that's, that's wonderful to see, and, uh, it's an important position, and I don't think I've ever seen so many applicants for a park board, but yes, Mr. Jones?
Can I just make one quick comment? Um, I was reading an article about cities that typically don't have a lot of people running for office or wanting to be on boards, and those are the ones that are not vibrant. The ones that have so many people running, and we have 10 that have put their name up, I mean, that's a sign of a vibrant city where people want to get involved, and, and that, that really makes me happy to, to see that, so, just wanted to make that comment.
Well said, and, and we're seeing a lot for the park board position, but we have seen it for so many positions over so many years. So, uh, duly noted, uh, Mr. Jones, thank you for that. Uh, so we will carry that over, um, for the incoming council to handle, um, as appropriate. Um, alright, so that gets us to our consent agenda, we'll entertain a motion.
Sir, we didn't actually approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Oh, well, I'm so used to having amendments, that's what it is, um.
We were giving you a break tonight on your last.
Thank you all.
Waiting for President Elliot Wyatt.
Seriously, I don't think I've ever, thank y'all for waiting for the very last meeting to do this.
His first real meeting is gonna be the night when we have committee meetings, so everything's gonna be coming out now on the floor, so welcome, President Elliot.
It's so foreign to me to have no amendments, I have no clue what to do. So, I will entertain a motion for approval of tonight's unamended agenda.
I had Jones as first, 30.
Mr. Jones, second from Ms. Andrus.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful, our unamended agenda is approved. Alright, now that'll get us to our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
By Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Walton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so that will be approved, uh, the consent agenda will be, and that gets us to our old business agenda, 1808-20, which is a public hearing, um, that was held on September 14, 2020, to consider declaring property located at 1125 Hardwick Lane a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth. This is coming to us from Scott Cook, our code enforcement officer, and I know we've been looking at this property and look forward to report from Mr. Cook.
Oh, yes, this property is owned by the Mr. and Mrs. Who. If you remember, at the, uh, last, uh, public hearing we had, uh, Jason Hugh, Who came up and, and spoke about what he planned on doing. Um, we can see, that is, uh, today's date, um, what has been done, looks more than the side that needs to be done, and we've got one more going back to the last public hearing, I believe, uh, maybe not? Maybe not? That's it?
Hold on.
Okay.
There it is.
Okay, there it is, that's where we started at on September 14.
Wow.
So you can see there's been a lot of work done, um, so, I'm not sure what Mr. Who is here, but we are, we are making progress.
Alright, yeah, the, 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 the public hearing was opening close, but do you have a recommendation, um, Mr. Cook?
Uh, because of the progress that's being done, um, and it is quite an undertaking, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and carry that one over.
Alright, and do you think carrying it over for, um, our next meeting, which will be?
Night.
The night, do you think that will be sufficient time?
It, it should be, weather permitting.
Alright, alright, so without objection, we will carry over 1808-20 and hope for, uh, perhaps a conclusive report on November 9. Now, yes, Mr. Wolverton?
Um, Mr. Cook, do you know, it, it kinda looked like, from the pictures, that bamboo to left at home may have been sprayed or something, it looks like it's dead or dying to me, based on what I just saw, and I know they were talking about removing it.
Yeah, they were talking about going in and grubbing up all the roots, yeah, so I don't, I think what you're seeing there is just, just the dead from there, just chopping it off at, you know, ankle high right there.
Yeah, and I, and I do remember, just for the record, that when, when the son came, he, he mentioned that it was, it was pretty extensive work, they were gonna do it in phases, and their ultimate goal was to go ahead and list the property for sale soon, so, so, okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Alright, thank you, um, alright, so we're gonna carry over 1808-20 and let's do 08-09-20, which was another public hearing, um, that was held on September 28, uh, 2020, to consider declaring property located at 2600 BM Montgomery Street a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth. This is another item from, uh, Mr. Cook, our code enforcement officer, and Mr. Cook, um, assume you have an updated report on this property?
Oh, yes, uh, the property is owned by William Reedus, um, of Birmingham, um, if you remember the last, uh, public hearing we had, I told you that I got a call from, uh, Ms. Reedus out of New York, said that they would, uh, be working to get it cleaned up, um, uh, it has not been done. Uh, last Friday, I did place a call back to Ms. Reedus, uh, Mr. Reedus returned the call, I was not in, he left me a message and apologized, he thought that a nephew had taken care of it, and that he would be sending out contractors this week to address it.
Alright, so, um, we've had some time, and still no compliance, you heard the report from Mr. Cook, do I have any questions or discussion points?
Mr. Cook, do you think, based on your conversation, did, did he leave you a message, did you say?
Yes, sir.
So you don't really, you didn't get to talk to him, whether, whether, or move forward with, I mean, what's your recommendation?
Well, you, you kinda got two options, you can go ahead and declare it a public nuisance, um, that doesn't mean I've gotta go, take a crew in there tomorrow, I can still work with him, and that's what I prefer to do, the last thing I wanna do is for us to put that burden on the city work crews and put liens on property, uh, but I can, I can stretch it out, you know, as long as they work with me, I can work with them, but it kinda puts, puts them on the hot seat that, you know, we, we can go, or you can carry it over.
Okay. So. Any, any motions, action from council members?
We had one on Queensberry that we declared a public nuisance, and he had most everything done, y'all went ahead and declared it a public nuisance, he finally reached out to me, I said, "You're not quite done, do this, and this, and this," and he did it, and we never stepped on the property.
So it makes them feel a little more pressured.
Exactly.
I think I would move to go ahead and declare the property a nuisance.
Alright, so we have a motion for public, uh, declared a public nuisance by Mrs. Smith, second by Mr. Thames, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you, Mr. Cook. We will go ahead and, um, have that property declared a, a public nuisance, that will be. We will go ahead and have that property declared a public nuisance, that will be resolution?
157.
20157?
Yes. 20-157, yes, sir.
Great, thank you. All right, and I think we're going to take an item out of order now that's not on our agenda, coming to us from Mr. McCluskey, Mr. McCluskey, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Wright, I'd like to make this motion from the floor to suspend the rule that requires a motion to reconsider to be made at the same or the next succeeding minute, meeting of the council, so that the council can reconsider its vote on item number 1203-20, an ordinance to rezon property at 2927 Central Avenue, PID number 2800073035009, from a C1 office building district to an I2 institutional district.
Second.
All right, so this is a, let's carry on, I understand, it's a motion to suspend the rules, bring this item up out of order, does that understand, we need a two-thirds vote for this, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. McCluskey, and a second for Mr. Higginbotham, do you have any discussion or questions about that?
There's no debate.
Is this a roll call vote?
Probably the best to do one if you.
All right, let's just go ahead and do a roll call vote, that'll be fine.
Good.
Okay, Mr. Waltney?
No.
Mr. Thames?
No.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andress?
No.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes.
So after five minutes, I sent it.
Eight votes.
So you have eight votes in three, so carry.
So the rules have been suspended, bring this item up for consideration, this being 1203-20, do you have it?
I don't have the actual item, I mean, I've got the number.
Have what?
The actual item, just so I can.
It's 1203-20.
I just wanted to read, I wanted to read exactly what it was.
It's a rezoning from C1 to I2.
All right, so it is a rezone, and this is, I believe this is the church.
The, oh, the.
The OLS Church Parking Lot property to rezone, and the rules have been suspended, bring this up out of order, so Mr. McCluskey, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, and I would like to make a motion to reconsider that vote to where it goes back through the exact same process that it went through the first time, where there's public hearing and everything else.
All right, so this is a.
Peter, your mic.
Reconsider.
From Whitehall.
You would think, after all this time, a motion to reconsider, and I believe this is a majority vote, correct, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
All right, so this is a.
Point of order.
Motion to reconsider the rezone vote, and before we get in, we have a motion for it right now, before I get to a second, Mr. Waltney?
I would just like some clarification on why we're reconsidering it.
According to the gentleman that reached out to me in regards to some additional information that they would like to present to the council that they did not present the first time.
Is the use the same, I assume?
I believe the use is the same, correct, but there's additional information that goes along with that, that I don't think they had the first time, there may be somebody here to speak to it if they want, if you.
We're not really having a discussion about it right now.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
I'm just asking a question.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So this is.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure, all right, so we have a motion.
Second.
For the reconsideration, we have a second from Mr. Higginbotham, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so that will still.
And I abstain.
And with one abstention, two abstentions, we better do roll call vote, since we got Abstention City here going, so.
Okay, so this is, this is the motion to actually reconsider, is that?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Waltney?
No.
Mr. Thames?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt is?
Abstain.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to answer for you, okay. Ms. Andress?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Abstain.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Have seven yes, two no, and two abstention.
All right, so motion to reconsider does pass, and I believe now we have the item in front of us for actual consideration, or better stated, reconsideration. Yes.
No, I don't, I don't believe that's the case.
Mr. Wright, you're going to have to republish this to get it made to the public.
I'm, I'm correct.
Rezoned since it was denied, so the appropriate motion would be to set it for public hearing, first time, based on the November schedules that you, council schedule would be November 30th, would be the first presently scheduled meeting where that could be considered.
All right, all right, so without objection, yes, sir, Mr. Wolverton?
President Wright, does it have to go back to the planning commission?
No, they've already made their recommendation.
Okay, all right, so without objection, we're going to go ahead and set 1203-20 for a public hearing on November 30th for that lovely new council to address, and thank you, Mr. McCluskey, and, all right, so that'll do it for that item being.
You do.
Do I need a motion for that, Mr. Kendrick, to set it?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right, all right.
Just trying to.
I'll entertain a motion to set this item up for public hearing, I thought I had that authority, by Mr. McCluskey, second by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so this item will be set for public hearing for November 30th.
So that's 10 to 1?
Yes.
Just making sure.
Okay, all right, moving forward, thank you, sir. We have a public hearing tonight for variances to the fence ordinance at 800 College Avenue, this coming to us from Greg Cobb with our BEZ department, and this is a public hearing tonight, but we're going to begin with a report from our special issues committee, Mrs. Smith.
Yes, the committee heard about this issue last week and voted four to zero to throw the item out to full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight, motion was made by Mr. McCluskey and seconded by Ms. Andress.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith, and so we are here for a public hearing, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and Mr. Cobb, we'll hear from you first, and then we'll hear from others to speak in favor or against this item.
The homeowner here, Mr. Crow, I usually butcher that, but I'd just like to turn it over to him, he's got some photos to show you of what he's asking for, and I believe where they are.
All right.
Come on up and explain.
We asked you to sign a, we asked you to sign a.
Okay.
Do y'all believe I'm here to try to get 101.76 more square feet in my backyard? 101 square feet, right, we're here, yeah. Support real estate. So I think there's a couple pictures I took of the tax map that kind of shows, everybody's wondering where I was even talking about last time. Yeah, keep going, there we go. All right, so you see the bottom right corner here is going to be your elementary school, Edwood Elementary, and so if you took College Avenue, the front of the school, back towards Oxmore, that's my house, last on the right there, so I know last time I didn't have the pictures to show. All right, we'll go one more forward. All right, and I also wrote in my fantastic handwriting, which side of my house is the front of my house, since it's a corner lot, and so that's important because I'm, you know, being the corner, I'm trying to extend the fence in my backyard out towards Oxmore, just a little bit. It's so blurry, it's about the best picture I could find on the internet, but that's a bird's eye view of my backyard, so if you see kind of where the map is, anybody confused what you're looking at here? No, okay, so go one more, and I've drawn on this picture, I knew it wasn't going to show up, okay, so I am, I wish I had a laser, so if you see, there's four squares, four sharpie squares, the two that are up against Oxmore are just there for measurement purposes, yeah, that's right, and the two that are closer into my yard are where my current fence posts are, and so I measured from each of those out, and so the one on the bottom is about 15 feet, 1 inches, and the one on the top is currently 12 feet, 3 inches, and so it doesn't look right, it's uneven from the road, and so what I want to do is I want to move that top one, 4 feet, 3 inches closer to the road, and the bottom one, 7 feet, 1 inch to the road, which will leave an even 8 foot along Oxmore to my fence, so it'll be an even 8 foot gap that'll allow me to work with it, put a plant in there, put some bushes or something, nothing that's, you know, going to be high, it's going to look good, give me a little bit more backyard, and then I go to this picture, so this picture, the real life picture, is me standing on Oxmore, looking at this fence, I haven't lived there very long, I promise this is going to look better. And so the trash can on the right is where that fence post will be out to, and the ladder on the left is where the fence will come out to, so it's very insignificant, we can go to the next one. And so the one on the left is where you are going towards Palisades on Oxmore, you can see my Tahoe over there on the left is along with the trash can is where the fence is going out to, it's really not going to be changing very much from this angle, going from the other side, coming from Palisades towards downtown, you can see where that ladder is and where the trash can is, it's really not going to change anything here either, so really, the next pictures after this is what it gets down to, the real question is, what does it do for my neighbor's driveway? And so this picture on the left is me standing behind my car, so it shows how little I'm actually bringing it out, and then the picture on the right is standing behind my neighbor's cars on the road, so that'll be very insignificant also, so the question is, what happens when they back out of the driveway, can they see towards Palisades, that's the biggest question here, so the next picture after this, so this is where they would be if they were backing out of their driveway with their forerunner, and their car is not over the sidewalk, is not in the road, the car's not blocking anything, this is what they can see from their driver's seat, right here, and so you see that, where that ladder is, where the fence is going out to, they're going to have complete views of, it's really not going to block anything, and this is going to be the most significant hindrance that my fence is causing, right here, this view, and so this is not blocking anything, I've talked to my neighbor about it, I had him come out there, I looked at, had him look at the pictures, had him stand in the yard, he had, he thought I was being ridiculous, even asking these questions, but obviously I want to do it the right way, so I don't know if it showed up as a picture or not, but I did get a letter from him that he signed that said, no problem, he's all for it, doesn't have any issues whatsoever, and I did, and just in case it didn't come across as a picture, I do have a couple copies of that letter, if anybody wants it.
All right, thank you. While he's up here, I don't know if there's any questions, I have one question, Greg, it may be more for you, just to confirm, is there any sight distance problems with that that you see as was conveyed to us?
No, sir, I went out there myself and looked at it, and did the same thing he did, a neighbor's driveway, which is the next one down, I guess it's a red, whatever colored car, right there is where you'd be in the neighbor's driveway, looking back, and you see the ladder, and then you see the car approaching to the right, so you've got 200 feet of sight distance there. That was our, has always been our concern on corner lots and fences, is that, make sure they don't block traffic, and our first conversation was about that, so that's why he put up the examples of what you're going to see when it's finished, so I'm comfortable with that.
All right, thank you, sir.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate all the pictures, but I need a drawing that shows where the fence is going to be.
Yes, sir.
To attach to the regulation if it's approved.
No, I'll create, I'll create you one.
So it's actually got the measured exact distances of each one of them, so this is where the road is, this is, these are where the current posts are, so these boxes are where the fence is going to be moved to, that's a 4.3, or 4.3 inches, and that's 7.1 inch, it was up there, but it was just.
Yeah, that's impossible to read.
Well, I'll create one for you, if you have a survey, I'll put it on your survey, if you don't, I'll put it on a tax map, but I'll create one for Mr. Kendrick.
All right, thanks, sir. Any further questions for these folks while they're up here, I'm going to still.
I just want to say that I, the house that was in the picture across the street on Ox, it's on the corner of Mecca and Oxmore, that's the first house that I lived in, in Homewood.
Oh, yeah, 800 Oxmore.
Yeah, 800 Oxmore, that's me, yeah, well, it was me, and my neighbors, Mike and Molly, who lived there in your house, when I lived there, they so wanted to extend their backyard for their kids, so in fact, that's the reason they eventually moved, so I appreciate all the diligence that you went through to kind of make sure that everything was, you know, was square, so I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here wish to speak in favor or against this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will turn it over to comments from the council, or action from the council.
I'd make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Mrs. Smith.
Second.
Second from Mr. Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Was it Jones or Harden?
It was Mr. Jones.
Jones, what's that, Jones?
Harden was louder, but Mr. Jones, but Mr. Jones was quicker.
That's my word.
All right, so.
Greg, did you give Melody that map that she was going to draw?
Yes, sir.
That was a favorable vote, Melody, okay?
Yes, sir.
And that's going to be resolution 20-158?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I should say, thank you, Carl.
Congratulations on the last meeting.
Yeah, thank you. A man after my heart. All right, 0810-20, public hearing tonight for variances to the signed ordinance to permit more than one sign per tenant on the face of the building, and to permit an increase to the allowable sign size at 3415, 3415 Independence Drive, this coming to us from Dr. Corey Hartman with Skin Wellness Dermatology, and Mr. Q with our BEZ department, is there, oh, I've got it there, Mr. Q's back there, we're going to begin with, this is a public hearing tonight, we're going to begin with a report from special issues, Mrs. Smith.
Yes, committee met last week and voted four to zero for this item out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight, the motion was made by Mr. McCluskey and seconded by Ms. Andress.
All right, thank you for that, and so this is going to be a public hearing, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and Mr. Q, I guess we will begin with you, sir, if you can, I know we went through this for committee, but if you can.
That's right.
Repeat what we're doing here.
Does anyone have any questions from last time?
Are they on Zoom again, because remember last, last week they were on Zoom?
They were.
Brian, are they on Zoom?
Yes, they're on Zoom.
All right, so, Mr. Q, if you want to give us a general description, then we'll open it up to the Zoom folks, or.
Okay, sure, Brian, if you don't mind putting the, thank you, okay, so the first variance is for the size of the S logo, or the droplet logo, I think they called it, copy height is limited to 36 inches in height per the signed ordinance, they want to propose a 4 foot 6 inch tall logo, the second ordinance would be for two signs on the face as the signed ordinance permits a maximum of one per tenant, they're requesting two.
Okay, and, all right, so we have somebody, well, I tell you what, let's do the folks here first that are present, and then I will turn it over to the operator.
Mr. Wright.
Anyone to speak in favor of, come on up, Ms. Nancy.
Do you mind signing this? I'll be glad to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, I'm here on behalf of Veritas Medical Real Estate Advisors, we actually helped with this building, I do have the architect on the line who I think had taught to this most intelligently of all of us, of the signed ordinance, David, or if there are any questions, y'all have any questions?
Because I will just say that I went out there because I wanted to actually, like, put my brain around where it was, and I would tell everybody that it's not right up next to the road, it kind of looks like in the picture that it might be sitting right next to 31, but it's not, it kind of sits back a little bit, and it's a building that kind of sits down in a, like a dip.
This is the former Capstone Building.
Yes.
That was purchased by Dr. Hartman and renovated for medical office, he is occupying the top floor, with the exception of one, there is an entonist at the end, and then underneath, it is a multi-tenanted building underneath as well, so.
All right, and Mr. Jones, I certainly want, do you have questions, I, because I'm going to get to the council, but I want to try to, questions of the folks, does he have questions for Nancy, or, all right, and I know we have somebody online.
We have David, we have the architect and our sign guys online, they're both on Zoom.
Okay, do any of you who are online, please identify yourself, if you would, if you have anything to add.
Hi, this is David Blackman, I'm the architect, and we'll be happy to answer any questions, but I think Nancy did a pretty good job of explaining, thankfully, I think the temporary sign does a pretty good job of illustrating what we plan to do in a permanent sign, and again, I think we. in a permanent sign. And again, I think we talked about this last week, but you know, just so everyone, it's clear. The four droplets that form the S of the logo, presently they're printed on a white background, so it looks like a border. Those will actually be individually mounted signs that are lighted in the same blue as the rest of the building. So it will look a little different, but the size is accurate in terms of what you see on the temporary sign.
All right. If I remember correctly, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but so we're, if they're individual signs, it's almost like, man, almost like five blob signs or whatever. I don't know how you define it.
But we basically said they're, it's a logo. So it's four independent pieces, but they create one.
Thank you. I think that's a reasonable interpretation that it's really one sign, although I understand there's distinction of four different parts. But all right. Anyone else online wish to speak in favor, I assume in favor of this item? And I assume there's no one else online to speak on this?
Doesn't look like it.
All right. Anyone else presently wish to speak in favor or against this item? Seeing no one else, we're going to enclose the public hearing. Thank you, Nancy. And we'll turn it over to council for questions, comments. Mr. Jones?
No, my question got answered with, I remember we were talking about the four, but it is one logo. It looks, it looks really good.
Okay.
I think. And the fact that it's back on the road, I support this.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
I'll just echo Counselor Smith's assessment that it does sit further back from the road than the picture perceived. And I think it's warranted for the sign variance.
Okay. And this is, this is all falling, I'm so used to sign variances, this is falling under our new sign ordinance, you know? So we don't see these all the time. Mr. Wyatt, I'll just make note of that.
And I apologize because I missed Special Issues this week, but is there a second variance for multi-tenant? Did I, or did I misunderstand that?
No, the sign ordinance allows one sign, one wall sign per tenant.
Okay.
In this case, there are two, since there's actually two separate wall sections, as you can see, it steps forward. So there.
Got it. So the variance is for two different signs for one tenant.
It's for two, it's for two signs and a size for one.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right. And it's really two, Mr. Pugh, because the way the building's set, if they were right next to each other, okay.
That's right. If the S logo was actually, took the place of that, that S in skin.
Yeah.
That may be, we wouldn't, we would just be talking about a size variance. But in this case, it's a number of signs variance as well as a size variance.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hickenbottom?
I just, I wanted to make sure my recollection was correct. So the, the size variance is on the logo and the other sign meets our size requirement. Is that correct?
It does. It does.
Ms. Andrews?
I think that Dr. Hartman did a lovely job renovating the building and I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion for approval from Ms. Andrews, second from Mr. Gualtney. Any further questions or discussion?
I also want to appreciate Dr. Hartman coming to Homewood, spending his money in Homewood and making that building look really nice.
Duly noted, sir. Thank you. And so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So that will stand approved and that will be Resolution 20159.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is 011020, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with Lexi Poll for annual subscription to Fire and Rescue One policy and training module. Coming to us from Chief Hill and Battalion Chief Broadhead in our fire department. And we will begin with this item, I believe, with a report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance committee met on October the 19th and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item. It is budgeted in maintenance contract 05-15-540900. So 5 to 0 coming out of finance.
All right. So that's a favorable motion coming out of finance. Do I have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that authorization is approved and that will be Resolution 20-160. Thank you, sir. Next item, 021020, request for, request for proposal production for the city communication services. Excuse me. This is coming to us from our counselors, Andrews and Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Andrews and Mrs. Smith. And we will begin with this item with a report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend setting the RFP deadline for November 30th at 4:30 and we'll open those at 5:00 PM. So 5 to 0 recommendation.
All right. So this is a recommendation for November 30, 4:30 PM deadline for these proposals and a bid opening that same day at 5:00 PM.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Any questions or discussion on this, our new communication services proposal?
I just want to state that I know they've spent a lot of time on this. They've gotten some feedback from the community. They've tried to incorporate that feedback into what they're doing. And so I just appreciate the effort of Ms. Andrews and Ms. Smith.
And I will echo that, you too. Hats off to you for taking on this endeavor and for the product that's produced and, and hearing and reaching out to the public. And I know it's going to be an ongoing discussion and as it always is. And what a great step forward. And so we have approval from finance. Any further accolades or questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that will stand approved. And again, congratulations, Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Andrews on that effort and look forward to the final product. 161020, request to address ADA accessibility, accessibility concerns on Cobb Street sidewalks near the Hall Kent Elementary School. This is coming to us from Counselor Wolverton. And we will begin with this item with a report from Public Works. Mr. Gualtney?
Can I give you a round one?
Okay. Ah, there we go. Committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor McCluskey and seconded by Counselor Wolverton. Open up the bottom area tonight.
No problem. And we're cutting into a curb. Isn't that what we're doing?
Several sections, yes, sir.
Several sections. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Any further questions or discussion on that? Yes, Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry. In committee, I couldn't remember. Is this, is this going to finance?
It is not. It's being funded out of the ADA accessibility, like the sidewalk fix money that's already in there.
So between now and 2024, we have either $50,000 or $100,000 collected every year to make ADA compliance. We have a deadline, I think it's 2024. So there's already funds available.
Okay. I didn't know if that was going to finance. Okay. Thank you.
Did you say 2024?
I believe it's the 2024.
I'll verify.
Okay. So we have a favorable report and vote coming out of Public Works. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that will stand approved. I don't believe we need a resolution for that one, but look forward to the work and the funding out of ADA for that. All right. Next item is, I have 120820, which is a request to address safety concerns at Hollywood-Lapredo intersection. This is coming to us from counselors Andrews and Harden. And I believe we get a report from public safety on this one and where we're going. Thank you, Mr. McCluskey.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met and heard recommendations from Clark Bailey with Kinley Horn as well as several different residents. I don't want to list all of them here there, but there were about eight or 10 who live in Hollywood and participated also on Zoom. And the committee then voted 4 to 0 to recommend increasing the patrols, adding crosswalk with pylons, grading on asphalt and conducting a further study that not only included that particular intersection, but the entire block from that intersection to.
Malaga.
Yeah, to Malaga. Excuse me. Thank you. And it was, a motion was made by Counselor Andrews and seconded by Counselor Wyatt.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a favorable vote coming out of public safety for several action items. I don't know if this is going to be a resolution.
No, it's an ordinance for the pedestrian crosswalk.
It will be an ordinance. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that. All right. So with an ordinance, we will have a first reading. Mr. Kendrick?
It's an ordinance to provide for the installation of pedestrian crosswalks at the intersection of Hollywood Boulevard and Lapredo Place in the city. Be ordained by the city as follows. Chief of Police shall be directed to install pedestrian crosswalks across Hollywood Boulevard and Lapredo Place at the intersection of Hollywood Boulevard with Lapredo Place in the city. Section 2, that all drivers and motor vehicles defined in the highway code shall yield to pedestrians located within the crosswalk as defined above. Section 3, that any person found guilty of violating this ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 4, that all ordinances or parts of ordinance contrary to provisions hereof are specifically repealed. Section 5, any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by court of common jurisdiction, such holding shall not affect the other parts, provisions or sections of the ordinance not thereby affected. Section 6, the provisions of ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor and the city council of the city of Homewood.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. And with that first reading, I will entertain a motion for unanimous consent by Mrs. Smith, second by Mr. Harden, or Mr. Thames, and roll call vote. Melody?
Okay. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hickenbottom?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes.
All right. So that unanimous consent is approved. And now we have the item before us and we'll entertain a motion for approval of the item.
Sub move.
Second.
By Mr. Thames, second by Ms. Andrews, and another roll call vote. Ms. Melody?
Okay. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hickenbottom?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes.
2786.
All right. Thank you. It's ordinance 2786 stands approved.
President Wright, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, Ms. Andrews.
I just want to make sure that this stays, that we carry this over, that it stays on the agenda procedurally correct so we can take it back up when the study is complete rather than having to refer it again.
We love to add a public safety report.
Okay.
If it's not, I'll make sure that I.
So it won't be on the council agenda, but it'll be in your committee agenda.
Yes, great. Thank you.
All right. And certainly if it's not, and there's, we can easily add that, but so.
I haven't done the agenda for the next time, so I'll say that y'all leave it out for, and let's honor for further action.
Okay, great. So it will be on public safety committee. All right. Next item, 031020, request for consideration to work in the right of way to access the rear yard at 716 Crest Lane to remove a tree. This is coming to us from, oh, excuse me. Let's go. 230920, request to restrict parking at City Hall Plaza. Sorry about that, Mr. Wyatt. This is coming to us from Counselor Andy Gualtney. And we will begin with this item with a report from public safety. Mr. McCluskey?
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of not allowing traffic on City Hall Plaza. The motion was made by Counselor Wyatt and seconded by Counselor Andrews.
All right. So this will be for another ordinance. So we will need a first reading on this. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to prohibit motor vehicle travel owner across the plaza in front of Homewood City Hall adjacent to 19th Street South and to provide penalties for the violation thereof. Be ordained by the city council as follows. Section 1, be unlawful for any person, firm or corporation to permit any motor vehicle that's defined in the highway code of the state of Alabama to travel on or upon the plaza in front of Homewood City Hall adjacent to 19th Street South. Section 2, that by the adoption of this ordinance, the city council designates the current entrance off of 19th Street South to the plaza to be designated as loading zones and shall be marked to permit motor vehicle to temporarily load in those locations for a period of time not to exceed 15 minutes pursuant to the signage placed at its entrance. Section 3, the chief of police is authorized and directed to erect and install or cause to be erected and installed on the streets referenced above, appropriate lines, markings or limited parking signs at the places described in section 1 and 2 above. Section 4, the violation of this ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor upon being found guilty shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 5, that if any part, provision or section of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional or invalid by a court of common jurisdiction, all the parts, provisions or sections shall remain in force in effect thereof. Section 6, the provisions of this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor and the city council of the city of Homewood.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. And so with the first reading, we're now turned to unanimous consent. I will entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
Sub move.
By Mr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Gualtney, and roll call vote. Melody?
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hickenbottom?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. So unanimous consent has been approved. That brings the item before us and I will entertain a motion for approval of item 230920. Yes.
Just, well, just before we, I'm about to make a motion, but just wanted to thank Mr. Gualtney for bringing this up.
Yes, I think.
I think that we all recognize that the safety issue out there is important. We've got kids running around and it's just not a place for cars to be driving through. So I think it's sort of long overdue, but I appreciate Mr. Gualtney bringing it up so that we can solve that safety concern with this. And I would make a motion to approve.
So we have a motion for approval from Mr. Wyatt, second from Mr. Gualtney. And before we vote, I'm just going to echo those comments. Any, thanks for pushing this item. We've talked about it and thought about it, but it really did need to be strongly considered. We actually have public safety vehicle spots out there that really, I'm glad we're doing this and we're getting our attention on this now. And much less, it has become a more, you know, higher traffic volume out there. And it was, it was time to do this for public safety before anything bad happens. So thank you for that. And so we have a motion and a second for approval on this item and a roll call vote. Ms. Melody?
Okay. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hickenbottom?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith? Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes.
You got 2787.
Yes. Ordinance 2787 stands approved. And again, thank you, Mr. Gualtney. 031020, request for consideration to work in the right of way to access the rear yard at 716 Crest Lane to remove a tree. This is coming to us from Craig Lawrence, the homeowner, and Mr. Wyatt Pugh with our BEZ department. We will begin on this item with a report from Special Issues. Mrs. Smith?
Yes. The committee met last week, heard from the homeowner, saw some pictures of cars that had been damaged and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Wrong item. No, this is the one where he has to access it from another street so they can crane the trees out. But anyway, we voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval. And the motion was made by Ms. Andrews and seconded by Mr. McCluskey.
All right. Thank you for that. I don't know if there's any further questions or discussion on this. I know we did look at it in committee. All right. Seeing no further questions or discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that item will stand approved and that'll be Resolution I have 20-161.
That's correct.
All right. All right. It gets us to our committee referral agenda, which was not amended, I think, for the first time in my life. I will entertain approval of it, even though I've never entertained approval of a non-amended committee referral agenda before. From Mr. Hickenbottom? Mr. Wyatt, how exciting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. That unamended committee referral agenda is approved. I'm going to be calling in some as a resident. I'm going to have. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, my Ward 5 representatives have no idea what they're in for when I become a resident. So. All right. Next item, we're going to Other New Business, which is 241020, request to authorize an emergency expenditure for roof repair for street and sanitation building. This is coming to us from Berkeley Squires. And I have, Dr. Jones is going to provide us a report on this. I guess this did not go through finance, but I suppose you can help update us on what we're doing here.
Yeah. Berkeley couldn't, couldn't be here tonight, but he did explain the situation that.
Mr. Wyatt, how exciting, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that item will stand approved, and that'll be resolution I have twenty-dash-one-sixty-one.
That's correct.
All right. All right, it gets us to our committee referral agenda, which was not amended, I think, for the first time in my life. I will entertain approval of it, even though I've never entertained approval of a non-amended committee referral agenda before.
Sub move.
From Mr. Higginbotham.
Second.
Mr. Wyatt, how exciting, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that item will stand approved, and that'll be resolution I have twenty-dash-one-sixty-one.
That's correct.
All right. All right, it gets us to our committee referral agenda, which was not amended, I think, for the first time in my life. I will entertain approval of it, even though I've never entertained approval of a non-amended committee referral agenda before.
Sub move.
From Mr. Higginbotham.
Second.
Mr. Wyatt, how exciting, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that unamended committee referral agenda is approved. I'm going to be calling in some as a resident, and I'm going to have-
I'm trying to make a note, so I could be part of history, Mr. Pugh.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, my Ward five representatives have no idea what they're in for when I become a resident, so. All right, next item, we're going to other new business, which is twenty-four-ten-twenty, request to authorize an emergency expenditure for roof repair for street and sanitation building. This is coming to us from Berkeley Squires, and I have Dr. Jones is going to provide us a report on this. I guess this did not go through finance, but I suppose you can help update us on what we're doing here.
Yeah, Berkeley couldn't, couldn't be here tonight, but he did explain the situation that it's a, it's a roof, really membrane replacement. It's, he thought that he could get by this year without having to replace it, but it's more of an emergency type situation to repair it. He had, there are even tarps that are up there, and the, we've looked at it and believe, I mean, we have funding in the small infrastructure fund, and would recommend taking it out of there, so it would be up to thirty-six thousand to amend, and we can amend that line item if we need to. You know, as you know, we put in fifty thousand per quarter for that small infrastructure, and that would be my recommendation, but I'm open to other suggestions, so that, that's a twelve-dash-twelve-dash-five-two-two-five-zero-zero to, you are repairing it, but it is a new membrane that's going to be going on, onto the roof. It's going to be white, it's going to look insistent with his other facilities, so he said it's going to look, look very nice.
Can I ask a question? Is that, is that the building that's such a mess that we store cars and stuff in, or is this the first building that you come to that he's got?
It's the former, the one on the back, the store and the cars, yeah.
As I go down Citation Court, it's the last building on the right that we own?
Yes.
Because I know he would like to tear that down at some point and get money from us to do that. Are we putting a brand-new roof on the whole thing?
It's the first building.
No.
It's not the warehouse that you're talking about.
No, it, it's the, I thought that's what I said, the first.
Before you get me there.
Okay, okay.
It's not the one that he wanted torn down.
Okay, that's fine.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Everyone, please excuse me for just ten seconds. Pardon me, it's not a real emergency, but it's a quasi-emergency, hold on.
Oh, I like, are you okay? All right. Okay, so you're picking me up? Okay, thank you. Bye.
Life with kids, baby.
I know she's a homecoming queen.
No, I literally-
That was a new teenager.
I had a call from my son, and I'm sorry, I'm really not trying to add humor to it, but he was stranded at the soccer field because I think we had some confusion. I'm picking him up, and I needed to answer that call. So, thank you for your indulgence. I'm right in the middle of a-
You can do anything at your last meeting.
Action item, so.
Break out and fall.
You guys will be free of this in no time. All right, Dr. Jones and Mr. Harden, thank you for that. All right, so we do have thirty-six thousand coming from small infrastructure. Is there any further questions or discussion on that, other than we're rating that small infrastructure early? But it does sound like appropriately necessary for this.
We promised Mr. PUFT ran short, that it would amend it at a later time, so I'm just making that for the record.
Mr. Puft's counting the dollars already.
Since the budget's not even dry yet, we're already using thirty-six thousand.
I was about to say.
It is painful for me to make that motion, but I'm making that motion.
I bet it is, but it does sound important. So we have a motion.
And I will painfully second.
Well, Higginbotham beat you to it. He's going to be part of, he wants more history up here, so.
I just hear I can spend money from the next budget.
All right, so we have a motion.
Pass the buck.
All right, motion for approval for Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Higginbotham, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that is approved, thirty-six thousand, thousand from small infrastructure. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Yep.
Twenty-five-ten-twenty, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for services and pay fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget appropriation for ClassTran. This is coming to us from Robert Burgett, our finance director, assistant city clerk, and Melody Salter, our assistant finance director and city clerk. And, Mr. Jones, you have another report for that one, I believe, sir.
Yeah, I can take, take this one. This one was properly budgeted, the amount of sixteen thousand eight forty-two, and it's the line item zero-one-dash-eleven-dash-five-seven-five-five-six-zero, so authorizing the mayor, I'd make that motion.
Great, and this is already a budget item? Any questions or discussion? Well, I will, I will take that as a motion for approval. I'll need a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Harden, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so ClassTran will get its budgeted payment. Thank you, sir. Next item, we're going to go over to twenty-seven-ten-twenty, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for services and pay first quarter fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget appropriation for the BJCTA item. This is coming to us from Robert Burgett, our finance director and assistant city clerk, and Melody Salter, our city clerk. This was carried over previously, or where are we?
This is the first time on the new business, but I just didn't get the contract from-
Oh, I got you. Okay, so where are we on this? We don't-
We do not have the contract yet.
Okay, got it. I'm sorry.
That shouldn't surprise you.
All right, without objection and without a contract, we are going to carry that item over, so for the new counsel-
For Mr. Wyatt to deal with.
Yeah, for new counsel to wrestle with.
Is it nine more?
Yes.
I'm on it tomorrow.
Yeah, don't blame me. All right, twenty-eight-ten-twenty, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of October thirteen, twenty-twenty, through October twenty-six, twenty-twenty. Again, coming from Robert Burgett and Ms. Salter, our city clerk, and Dr. Jones, again, I believe, you've been busy man serving our city.
This will be my last motion of the night, hopefully. I had several questions, and Mr. Burgett answered them, so I would move for approval of the vouchers from October thirteenth to the twenty-sixth.
All right, so we have a motion for approval of the vouchers through October twenty-six, twenty-twenty, from Mr. Jones, and a second from Mr. Higginbotham, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And those vouchers are approved. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for all your work, and thank you all for bringing us to the end of our agenda, and, Mr. Mayor, you don't get to pass over tonight, my friend. We need to hear from you, so thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. I started to bring, for my closing remarks, I started to bring like the dictionary and just say I wanted to read it into the, to the record. But that would cut into my fishing, so we're not going to do it. Before my final comments, I do want to just mention a couple of things from a city standpoint. You know, a while back, we started talking about refinancing our bonds, and we heard a lot of chatter on Facebook, when we should do it, when we shouldn't, and to be quite blunt, just from a lot of people that just didn't understand what the situation was. So, as you know, some of us was in some meetings early on to see what we needed to do to get some advice that would benefit the city the most, and a lot of people out there thought that we should wait until the elections to try to decide to do something. I disagreed with that, and I think the numbers are going to prove that we were able to do the right thing at the right time. I know, just a few, a little background, one of the things, and Patrick, you'll, you'll learn this, it's actually fun when you've got some good people around you that can kind of help and coach, like they did with me, on these rating calls, where you basically sell the city again to people in New York, people you're not going to meet, but they're just looking at numbers, they're looking at, Walter, you can attest to this, you were there as well. It seems like over my last twenty years, you've always been there.
Sorry.
No, don't apologize. No, no, listen, that's, no, it's, it's good to have friends around you, so I, so we do the rating calls, and then, and then you hope and pray that they see things as you see things, and that the facts are presented, and you leave that call with, or those calls with Moody's and Standard and Poor, really putting our best foot forward for the investment community. But the real fun part of it is when you get back their report, if it's favorable, saying all the good things that they see about the city of Homewood. For example, the city's fund balance is approximately sixty-eight percent of operating revenues, twice the U.S. median for double-A rated cities across the country. The city's net cash balance, approximately seventy-one percent of operating revenues, is far better than the double-A category U.S. median for cities. The city's management is viewed as strong, with good financial policies and practices, and strong budgetary performance. Homewood has a very strong budgetary flexibility and liquidity. Fund balances and cash reserve positions the city well to manage through an economic downturn if necessary. Of the city's total debt, it's important to note that about a third of the debt relates to the city's fifty-five million contribution to the Homewood City Schools in two thousand sixteen. And I don't want to get too far deep into the water here, but I will remind you who are coming back to stay focused on Homewood, and don't let people compare us to Mountain Brook and Vestavia, okay? I can promise you, it will be a mistake if you do. Homewood, Vestavia, and Mountain Brook have very little in common, except for the tight people who live and, and our income. But what it takes for us to operate our city versus them operating their city, just don't let them get you off in the weeds on that. Stay focused on exactly what we've been doing for the past twelve years, and understand that there are, there are huge differences that I don't think the average resident and business owner, quite frankly, understand or really stop to think about. You just look at capital alone, people say, well, your fire truck costs a million, too. Mountain Brook's costs six hundred thousand. But they're not trying to protect a lot of the things that we have to protect. Sanford University, Brookwood Hospital, the Am South Building, the list goes on and on, Barber's Dairy, parts of Pepsi. We have a lot, bigger buildings and businesses to protect than some of our sister cities. It's not a slam at anybody, it's just, it is what it is, and we don't operate at the lowest common denominator. We operate at the highest common denominator, because we're Homewood, and I think that's what people expect. Our police department, Vestavia and Mountain Brook don't have to have a police force like we do, because they don't border one of the most dangerous cities in the United States. It's just a fact. So continue to do what you need to, to give the men and women of Homewood Police Department the tools necessary that they need to do their job, and taking into the city's ad valorem taxes and the sales taxes dedicated to schools, not county and district property taxes assessed by the county, but the city's contribution to schools, measure dollar for dollar, per student, we're the highest in the area. We're about fifty-three-hundred and six dollars, and I think the next closest looks to be Hoover at thirty-four hundred. So I think that says a lot about where our priorities as a, as a city stand as well, and you look at our, our new school facilities, again, some of the finest in the state, and our kids deserve that. So the money that, that we use to make investments in our parks, in our public safety facilities, and in our schools, don't let anyone make you feel bad about that, and when they start talking about debt, just ask them if, if they hold themselves to the same accountability as they do us. And when I say that, ask them what their mortgage is, and when they say, well, their mortgage isn't, their house isn't paid off, well, then they're, they're in debt, okay? But there's good debt and there's a bad debt, and when you can stroke a check and easily cover your expenses like we do every month, and you're able to provide the services and the amenities, speak of services, I, I don't, I don't know of any other city around that offers backdoor trash and garbage pickup like the city of Homewood does. Might not be any big deal for the younger people, but to our elderly who live here in Homewood, that's a big deal. It's a big deal to have somebody come and pick that up for them, and they don't pay for it. So I think you're to be commended for continuing that service. Operating would probably be a lot less if you wasn't having to buy garbage trucks and pay all those guys to do it, but of all of our city employees, I'll, I'll tell you, our, our street and sanitation department is one of the most loved departments. I mean, where else do you see kids at Christmas taking hot chocolate and gifts and things like that to their, guys servicing their garbage? And I, I think that says a lot about our residents as well. So I, I think our city has a lot to be proud of, but I wanted, I wanted to reiterate what Moody's and Standard and Poor said about this, because that's what I want you to focus on going forward. For me, people have asked, so what are you going to do now that you're not going to be mayor? And I equate it to a good buddy of mine, he's since passed away not long ago, but Dr. Moby, he said upon his retirement from Mountain Brook Baptist, I said, "Chief," I said, "What you going to do when you retire?" And he said, "Scotty," he said, "I'm, I'm going to sit down in my rocking chair on my front porch, and after about six months, I'm going to start rocking." So I, I think I'm going to take that advice for a while. I just, I want to take a minute to thank some people. I want to thank my, my mom and dad. About, you know, seven years ago, my dad, he's not with us anymore, but my mom is, and, but he got to see me serve for about five years as mayor. Saw me sworn in twice, and I'm proud of that. They taught me as a little boy that I could do anything I wanted to do. I could become and achieve anything I wanted to, and I didn't have any more sense than the mentality of what was considered a government worker. And things happen with employees and workers, not just in city government, but in any job. When you show up for a reason, when you show up for a purpose, and when you want to serve with a glad heart, you get a lot more done than you just, than just showing up because you were supposed to. And I think they've become a lot more productive when they started realizing that what they do matters and it counts and it's important. And I know, I have zero doubt that they'll continue to do that. So Patrick, you're going to inherit a great team. Mike Kendrick, you're another one I wouldn't want to do this without. Well, I'm not coming back, so I can say whatever I want to. And I pretty much did, anyway. So I, the city will probably never really know who I believe to be the real Mike Kendrick. I think he's one of the best city attorneys in the state of Alabama. I've always trusted his judgment, his discernment, his wisdom. He didn't always tell me what I wanted to hear. He doesn't always tell you what you want to hear, but he does tell us what we need to hear. And then whatever decisions we make, I don't know of anybody defends it any harder than he does. And I also happen to know, too, that Mike does a lot of things for people that, and I wouldn't embarrass him, but... He does a lot of things for this city and for people in this city that the general public will never, ever know about. Thank you. Walter, I ran out of notes. I guess that means it's time for me to hush. But I will say, this has truly been one of my, I'm disappointed in a lot of ways, I'm relieved in others. I will pray for y'all. This is a big responsibility. You are our neighbors, like you talked about earlier. I will pray for your success. And if people in Homewood are smart, everybody will pray for our success. We have a wonderful city, one that I'll defend to my dying day. And I always enjoyed representing Homewood because everywhere I went, they were either talking about how great our city was, how great our schools are, how fortunate we are to be in a position that we're in when sadly some other cities aren't in so great of a position. So I have no doubt we'll be able to continue that. And I'll pray that y'all are able to make decisions when it's hard and tough. Governor Brewer told me a long time ago, he said, "You know, Scotty," he said, "being mayor and being on the city council is a lot harder than even being governor, because the closer you are to the people, the more access they have to you, the harder it is." He said, "Nobody ever stops me at Piggly Wiggly." He said, "Because I'm not at Piggly Wiggly." We are. And when these, I'll just say this, hopefully, for the general public, if nothing else but just to remind them, it's not easy, because sitting on the council, it's hard. It is hard. It's hard sometimes voting against your neighbors. When you know good and well, you're going to see them tomorrow. And they look at you like, "I can't believe you voted against me on that." But when you make decisions, you just have to do it in a way that you believe affects the city in the best light. I'm saying this for y'all, not for me, and I'm saying it for the general public. I just, I want them to be reminded it's not easy and it's not simple. And Peter, I think you said it probably best last council meeting when you, the great quote of getting in the ring and getting your nose bloody and fighting, okay? That's what I want you to know, and that's what I want you to be proud of when you go home, is that you put your name in the hat. And you was willing to get hit in the nose by somebody who doesn't even have the courage to come to a meeting, okay? Key board warriors is what I love to call them. They get their coffee or whatever it is they're drinking about 1:00 in the morning, and they tell you everything that you need to be doing in order to, the way you should vote, how you should run the city, all those kind of things, okay? But y'all know what it's like to actually be accountable, to get dressed, to come up here, and to cast your vote, so you can then get hit in the nose, okay? So I will say, thank y'all for your service. It truly is an honor for me to have served with y'all. I know y'all will keep right on going. You've got new people coming on the council. There'll be a little learning curve for them as well, like it was for everybody, but they're going to do great as well. And I want y'all to pray for Patrick. I want you to cut him some slack, okay? He may not come to one of your committee meetings, okay? He's probably not going to feel like listening to whether you think a stop sign needs to go somewhere after he has sat and considered whether somebody keeps their job. There's a lot of heavy decisions that nobody will know about, except you, the department head, and the employee. And they're not easy decisions sometimes, but the amount of meetings that the mayor goes to is pretty overwhelming at times. In fact, sometimes you'll think they just want to meet to decide when to meet again. But thank y'all. Thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to serve with you. Thank you for the nice proclamation, means a lot. And with that, we've been blessed and highly favored to serve as mayor. I'm blessed and even more highly favored to call you my friends. I love you.
Mayor, if we could...
Mr. Chairman, could I? There is something that you probably didn't want to say, but I do want to say, and it's because I've worked with you a long time, but you and the council had the fortitude to move forward on this refunding. We were talking about $4 million, we saved $5.3 million. And if you'd waited one week, you would have lost $2 million in the market. So I want to applaud you and the council for what you did and what the money you saved this city by taking initiative. I know it's campaign season, people have lots of opinions, some of them well-informed, some of them not informed. But what you did is you saved, by taking the action you took, you saved $2 million in a period of seven days for the city. And I want to thank you for that.
Could I request a round of applause for that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I won't belabor, because I want to get to the other council members. But boy, just stop and think what's happened the last 12 years, Mr. Mayor. Just stop and think about it. It's enough to take your breath away, what has happened to this town. Thank you for that. All right, we'll start going down the line. Mr. Waltney?
Do I have to go first tonight? That's a hard one to come behind. I'll be brief. I do want to thank the mayor, Councilor Thames, Councilor Jacoboff, and President Wright. Your service and dedication, as y'all have all alluded to, it is a thankless job, but it's good when you can serve with people that, you know, have character and integrity and, you know, are here for the right reason. So I won't belabor that point, but I would like to say a few things about Councilor Thames. So I wanted to run for council in 2012, and I didn't have the knowledge of how to run for council, I didn't have time, I was asked not to, I was forging ahead, then I met Councilor Thames before the election, and kind of got to discussing city politics and realized our heads were aligned in the right direction and kind of very similar. And I decided to not run in 2012 and watch Councilor Thames go and win, well, get to a runoff and then win the runoff. Worked extremely hard, and I think that's been his legacy for the city is his hard work. Every time you turn around, Councilor Thames has the depth of knowledge, you know, for eight years, I mean, it's impressive. I'm not discounting your depth of knowledge, but your depth of knowledge is impressive. I've appreciated the, I guess, Kendrick, you know, ward spirit we've had the last four years. Coming in, this is, it's pretty intimidating. You all will find out they're going. Oh, well, I was going to say, it's pretty intimidating. You'll learn when you come in, this is meant for them, that it's a bit of a challenge to come in to a lot of people that you don't know and know, have, you know, that fire in your belly of things you want to change. And it was comforting to me to have someone on the council that I knew would help, you know, had the experience would have helped me navigate this path. But thank you for that. I appreciate your partnership. We will certainly miss Councilor Thames' thoughtful nature, his intelligence, and just his overall depth of knowledge in the finance budget, and just the depth of character you brought to the council. So thank you for your service and friendship.
Thank you, Mr. Waltney. Mr. Thames, you have to pick it up from there, my friend.
Does he need to set a committee? He does.
Yeah. I didn't want to... Chief, you set a committee for...
Hey, Brett, 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 that's for the next council, okay? It's not our problem.
Always keep me in line.
Do it tonight, okay?
Nope, we don't need committees.
So it'll be 11:00, 9:00, because 11:00 is just a regular.
About 5:00 p.m., 9:00?
No, we have the, we have council that runs it.
What time would you like?
I didn't think we were, we could set committee meetings until the new council...
That's why I was asking, did we wait on 11:00?
That's what we typically do, but...
You can set them, but they can change them if that you want.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, it's just a one-minute thing.
But I need 45 minutes for finance. It doesn't matter when we start, but I've got a lot of items on there.
45 minutes?
Yeah, 45 minutes.
All right, I'll start public works at 4:30, 4:15 minutes, is that good?
Okay.
You're doing public works at what time?
4:30, 4:15 minutes.
4:30, actually, on the ninth.
Gosh, I don't know. Not only you do 5:00 to 5:45, unless, I mean, I can take 5:45 to 6:00 and let it rounds back at the ninth. Let's do that, since I know any... Do you know your 15 minutes? What's going on?
It's your 5:45?
5:45.
Okay.
All righty. Mr. Thames, I think we're ready for you now.
Tough act to follow, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Waltney. It's been a lot of fun. It's a roller coaster ride. Obviously, there's highs, real high highs and real low lows, and lots of fun in between. But I have really been blessed to serve on two councils that respected each other, worked out our differences in ways that you don't always see, and you don't have to look very far from here to see councils and mayors not work out their differences while still respecting each other. And, you know, I think more and more, unfortunately, we see that, kind of the mayor touched on it, that national politics, state politics, internet politics spilling in. And, you know, I would just say, luckily, for eight years, I didn't have to experience that. You know, we absolutely don't always agree on everything, but we absolutely respect everybody's opinion, and we respect each other, and we know everybody's coming from the right place. And, you know, that type of behavior, we all know it's not constructive, but it's not necessary at all. I think it's pretty incredible, and it really shows the commitment that the people in this city that are willing to get involved have to the city, that 11 council people can, for the most part, arrive at consensuses that benefit this city. I really encourage the new group to just continue that. I've been blessed to serve with people like Heather Reed, Bruce Limbaugh, Fred Hawkins, and of course, everybody up here now, that all brought unique skill sets to the table, that all contributed, and that all loved Homewood. So I know it hadn't always been this way. As a matter of fact, I think right before I got involved, it wasn't that way, and I'm glad I missed that. And I think the results are pretty obvious, you know, when you're walking around, talking to friends or campaigning, and people kind of ask me, "What have y'all been doing?" I almost look at them cross-eyed, because if you sit back and think about what this city has gone through over the last eight, 12 years, especially since the leadership of Mayor McBrayer began, it's like turning a battleship. The radical demographic change this city's experienced made it necessary to completely retool our facilities, our departments, and we really started kicking that off when I got involved. I mean, you know, with a new Patriot Park, a new rec center, you know, and this time we've addressed all of our schools' needs, all of our athletics' needs. And thank you, Mayor, for reading off the rating agency's comments, because it's all been done in a fiscally responsible manner that leaves this city incredibly positioned to move into the future. Because as much as I love this city, and it's fantastic, and as unique as Homewood is, it doesn't matter how good the status quo is, it's never good enough. As soon as you just think, "All right, we've done it all," that's when you start losing. That's when you start falling behind. It's going to be, it's a constant, battle's not the right word, it's a constant effort to continue to improve. And I think this council, I think the previous council, I think Mayor McBrayer have done yeoman's work to move this city into the future and to accommodate the renaissance that we have had. I came here for one specific reason, to raise my children in a city that had incredible schools, was safe, and was a small town, yet offered all the amenities of, you name it, because we have them all. And Homewood is every bit of that and more, and everybody sees it. You see it in the children that are everywhere, you see it in the explosion in our schools, you see it in the homes being renovated and rebuilt, and it's all fantastic. I could not be more thrilled, I could not be more excited for the leadership under soon-to-be Mayor McCluskey and soon-to-be President Wyatt going forward. I know the council is in great hands as well, so I'm really excited, I really am. And I just want to obviously thank all the great department heads I've had our opportunity to work with, Chief Ross, Chief President, now Chief Hill. The mayor did a fantastic job putting fantastic people in the positions they need to be in. Berkeley, we've got great department heads. And, you know, the two people that I've been looking at the back of their heads now for years. In any organization, or business, or city, or whatever, you'll quickly realize the individuals that mean the most to that city in this case. And it's Mike Kendrick and Melody. I can't, I can't imagine us being so successful without the two of them. From day one, Mike has counseled me and this council from the exact right place. I don't think there's a man that loves Homewood more than Mike Kendrick. And Melody, I don't know what to say about you.
Hey, I'm a resident, because I spend more time here than I do at my legal and style place, so I probably need to pay property tax.
Well, I don't know if you want to do that, but you were, there's no person I've ever met that works harder than you, Melody. Thank you for everything you do. That's why we're... That's why we're so successful financially, and is because of you and all the information you're able to feed us. So, and obviously, I need to thank Amanda. She was here earlier with the kids. It's hard to believe that when I started, I had a toddler and an extremely pregnant wife. And now I've got two beautiful boys, but she's supported me every step of the way. And I think a lot of times, what, what some folks forget when we're making those hard decisions is, we all have spouses, and we all have families, and a lot of times, some of the, some of the stuff that's said can roll right off our back, but it doesn't roll off their back as easy. And so I hope folks keep that in mind as we, as their spirited conversations and spirited debates. So, I love her, and she's been incredible. And this has really been, well, and one other thing, and I probably should've, shouldn't be saying this after talking about my wife, but I really appreciate Councilor Waltney.
Brian's right, he had it that night.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's been, it really, that's one thing. Some people say, "Why do y'all have such a big council? Why does each ward need two people?" I can't imagine doing it by myself in a ward. I mean, being able to share the burden, especially being able to share the burden with somebody that you've worked so well with and have developed such a great working relationship has really been, has really been great. So I appreciate that, Andy, and I appreciate your friendship, and it has been my high honor. Thank you all.
We're gonna miss you up here. They're gonna miss you up here, I know. Best of luck to you. All right, Mr. Hickinbotham, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to attempt to be brief, try not to repeat a whole lot of what's been said before. I told my wife earlier today I didn't know what I was gonna say tonight, so, kind of jot notes down here as I'm just sitting here in the last two minutes. The first thing I want to do is to thank the citizens' ward, too. I appreciate so much them giving me this opportunity to serve and putting their trust in me for these four years. You know, I take it as a rare privilege to have my neighbors say, "We're going to entrust this, 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 this office to you and let you make decisions for four years on our behalf." That is a responsibility I always took very seriously. In fact, one of the things I always said to my wife was, in this job, I think it's important, or I'll just say, this is the way I approach the job. I always took everything we did here extraordinarily seriously in the work we were doing. It was a incredible responsibility. The only way I could get through it for four years is to not take myself very seriously, however. I think you have to constantly remind yourself when you're in an office like this that, you know, you're a temp employee. There's no authority that rests in you that is a long-term authority, there's no authority as councilperson that rests in you without the other 10 people sitting together and voting on something. So, to the new councilpeople, I would encourage them to just think about that, and, and understand what your role is as a councilperson. But, I thank the voters of our ward, too, so much. I certainly thank Andrew. He has been a great partner these last four years, and I know he's gonna do great things for the city the next four years with Carlos and the rest of the council. I thank all of my colleagues here. I have always said to people who have been angry with one person or the other on the council, who wanted me to say something negative about the other people on the council, I would say, "Look, we don't always agree on the issues that come before us." I said, "But I respect every person I serve with on this council, because I understand the kind of time, energy, and sacrifice that it takes to be here." And I know that the people who serve on this council love Homewood, and that's why they're here. And I don't have to reach the same conclusions as everybody else to appreciate their energy and passion and willingness to serve. So, I want to thank all of my colleagues here for the opportunity to be with you. We've already talked about the staff and department heads. I don't, I mean, I don't know what you say about Melody. She's the hardest-working person I've ever seen. I come in here doing those invoices, which I will, I'll miss so much. I'll miss so much. That's, I took a lot of pictures so I can just, you know, go through them later, kind of like you do with your children as they get older, so, you know, and Melody's up here working on Sundays, and, and in fact, when I would send her something over the weekend, because I'd go, "Oh, you know, I need to know something, but I don't, I don't have to know it now, but I'm gonna forget it if I don't send an email." I tried to put in the email, I'd always try to put, "Melody, I don't need to know this right away." But sure enough, within an hour, I got an answer to any email center, so, but I just think that is reflective of the kind of dedication we see in all of our employees in the city. It's, it's a fantastic group of people, and the city's so lucky to have them. I will, I will have to add, I have to thank my family. I know it's not always easy for our spouses and our kids to, you know, give up our time that we have to give to serve in this role, and I appreciate the fact that they let me do this for four years. Family is the reason I had to step away at the end of four years, because there were things going on with my mom and Lisa's parents, one of whom, after I made my decision, passed away from COVID-19. But I just, I couldn't, I could not run again because of those question marks in our lives. But family is so important, and so I'm so appreciative of my family that was, gave so generously of their time with me so that I could do things for, for the city. I guess the last thing I would say is that Supreme Court Justice Felix Frankfurter said that the highest office in a democracy is that of private citizens. So, as I walk away from the council, I'm going to consider it a promotion, back into the role of private citizen, and I suspect I will have many ideas to share with the council about what I think should happen, but what I will always say about whoever is serving here is that people need to treat them with respect for the time that they are putting in, and deal with the individuals, as the mayor often says, their neighbors who are here, with a kind of courtesy that you would expect someone to use when dealing with a neighbor. So, thank you, guys. I look forward to seeing what's happening in the next four years, because I know it's gonna be fantastic, and I will certainly stay involved to the degree that I can, but I appreciate this time that I've been able to have on the council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike, for throwing your hat in and bringing it for your service, my friend. Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
I'm gonna be very brief tonight. Obviously, I think there are a lot of fantastic people in this room. We have a lot of fantastic neighbors. We have people from all professions, all demographics represented in this city, and I'm excited about those that are, that are coming. Equally as excited to have been able to work with the few people that are departing after this week. And, I mean, everybody's said things that are completely true from, from start to finish. I appreciate everybody's passion, their, their knowledge, and the hard work that I've been able to learn from over the last four years. You know, it's, I don't know that I've ever used the expression, but it's like trying to drink from a, from a fire hose, right? When you first come on, there's a lot of things to learn, and I think that there, out of, out of everything and everybody here, the willingness to teach and to impart wisdom and share the things that they've learned ahead of us, or frankly, from their life experience or their professions, is something that is very valuable and that I've really appreciated. So, thank you, guys, for everybody that's, that's moving on, and, you know, obviously, Mike specifically, thank you for, for your camaraderie and just the ability to work together like ever, you know, it's been said already tonight, we may not always completely see eye to eye or agree wholeheartedly with everything, but I know that, you know, best interest is at heart in all decisions that are made. And frankly, to Britt's point, it, it's nice to have, you know, just like a spouse, it's, it's nice to have somebody else to go through some of these difficult decisions. And again, even, even from the standpoint of having a different perspective that you're looking at issues through a different lens. So, anyway, that's, I'll, I'll end it with that. I just want to say thank you to everybody that's, that's here and that, that's given of their time and their, their energy and efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Wolverton. All right, Mr., if I may say, Mayor-elect McCluskey, your word, sir.
This, this is a difficult night. It always is. You know, having been on the council as long as I, Walter's the only one that's got seniority on me up here. But, you know, we've had the, the absolute privilege of working with so many people who have cared for, for Homewood so deeply, and there's, you know, I've just, I've been honored to work with so many different people, and the, the four people that we're talking about tonight, you guys are at the upper echelon of those men and women that have, that have been a part of, of what the, the Homewood government is. To Councilor Thames and Hickinbotham and President Wright, you guys have always been such great advocates for your ward and for your residents, and for the businesses that are in your wards, and the fights that you guys have taken up for those, those people have just, it's been extraordinary. I've enjoyed working with, with each one of you guys, bouncing ideas off of one another. You know, it's, it's, it's a real, it's a real privilege to be able to work with somebody as well as this council has, and, and I'm certainly honored to, to have worked with all three of you, and, and certainly more for being able to call you a friend. Mayor McBrayer, so, the, the, when you first started is when I was appointed, not much more than, I think, about a month later. And I remember you sitting down with me and going through what was gonna happen, because I was coming into Ward Three, which is the ward that you live in. And, you know, you always, always said, even up until the, the last time we talked, we, you and I always talked about the fact that, listen, we're, you're, I'm the mayor, but you're my councilman, because I live in your ward, and there are a lot of responsibilities that you're gonna have. And I want you to, I want you to understand that your hard work, your dedication, your wisdom and your advice is not lost on me. I'm not coming into anything thinking that it's going to be easy, but I want everybody to realize that the reason that this city is in as good a shape as it's in right now was because 12 years ago, that gentleman over there made it a priority, not only for himself, but for every person that sat up here, not just the ones that are here now, but the ones that have, have served over the years. Mr. McBrayer, you made it a priority for all of us to do what's best for Homewood, and I think we've done a pretty good job of it. And I am, I'm honored. I consider myself to be blessed to have, have the opportunity to follow you, and I just, I appreciate everything that you've done.
Do I have to set a committee? Really?
Yep, you gotta, back to reality, real quick.
Mr. President?
He's not president yet, guys. He's Mr. President-elect right now.
Oh, Mr. President-elect, okay. Mr. Waltney, you took 5:45?
I did.
Okay, and Walter's taking 5:00?
To 5:45.
Walter said 1:00. Did you say 5:00? Okay, well, I'll just give you, okay. So I'll take 5:45, and I'll need, I'm just, I'll need the third, so you'll have to go before 4:30, sorry. I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCluskey. Thank you for those words.
Dr. Jones?
Okay, okay. It is a very emotional night, because we think about all this, I think about so many things over my time, and what, Mr. Thames, what you were talking about, and, Mr. Kendrick, you can remember Mr. Wendell and being up here saying, "I've gotta have a senior citizen center," you know? And so that was the battle cry when I first got on the council. And we, we looked at it, and we complied, and we built a beautiful senior citizen center. But then, over time, it, everything changed, and we became younger, more vital, the, I mean, it just became so exciting, and so it's continued on that ride, and it's been great. So that, and here we are in 2020, which is probably the most difficult year that we've all experienced, and it's almost like, I think it's helped us for us to come together every week to, to keep leading and keeping our head down and working, because it's been a, it's been a tough, it's been a tough year for, for everybody. But I do want to thank, I want to thank the mayor. I've enjoyed so much serving with you, and you've, you've done a great job, and, and you have loved Homewood with all your heart, and, and you have shown that. So, thank you for, for all that you've done, and we're gonna miss you. And then, as Mr. McCluskey was saying, when I got appointed, all right, well, I was the one that had met, met him, and I could see the passion in his eyes that he, he wanted to serve, and, and I'm so glad that, that we appointed you to the council from Ward Three. And I think we ought to have some kind of training to talk about what was successful, like what Mr. Waltney was talking about, working with Mr. Thames. And you and I were basically, we didn't even have, I mean, we, we got into the groove where a resident would, would ask for something. If you were busy, I would reply. If I was busy, you would reply, but we always, you know, tag teamed and worked really well together, and I think that's something that we can teach other people how, how to do that, but I'm gonna miss working with you. I truly am, from the ward, and people have, and we've got some fun issues coming up, you know, within the ward, so now it's gonna be, so it's, it's, it's great, but no, I really have, I've, I've enjoyed so much serving with you, and I look forward to the next chapter in, in, in your, your life here at Homewood, because I know you truly love the city as well. And Mr. Wright, goodness gracious, we, we've come a long way, because, you know, as you, I don't know if you knew that I was a procedure guy, you know?
And a high-level overview.
Yeah, and, and I apologize, but you have, you have ended up going from zero to sixty. I mean, you're just, you're a pro now, and you're leaving at the pinnacle of your career. That's what really bothers me, for you to have an eight-second committee meeting, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know if we'll, we'll ever beat that, but I really have enjoyed serving with you as well. And, and Mr. Hickinbotham, you and I, you and I have talked before about this, and we don't always agree, and, and there's been some tough issues this year, but I remember you saying one time, "Hey, you know, we, it doesn't matter if we don't agree, we're gonna leave as friends." And, and I even swayed you on, on one of the votes, you said, "Well, you know, I thought about it," and, and you've swayed me, too. So, I, I think we can learn from each other and, and continue to, to grow, and, and I appreciate your service. And, and Mr. Thames, I, I love the fact, when I see your family walking down the street, when you're walking to, to school with them and everything, it just encompasses what Homewood is all about, and that's, that's that shift where we have so many families, and it's, it's just, there's so many things for them to do, and I've been, really enjoyed having my, my family grow up here, too, and have two in college now, so I just have one, one left, but it's, I appreciate all the work that you've put in for Ward One. I really, I really appreciate that. So, I enjoy, I just want to continue... So I enjoy, I just want to continue, continue on, but I look forward to serving with the new council and I look forward to serving with you. As president, I won't give you as much grief, I promise. I'll be, I'll be very, I'll be.
Just as much as you gave him, right?
Okay, okay, but really, just thank you to everybody for, for your service to the city. I know it's not always easy, so that's all I had. And we'll be at five, we'll be finance at five o'clock.
Got you down, sir. All right, Mrs. Smith.
I'm not going to belabor the many wonderful points that have been made, but I will say that it has, it is, I am grateful and thankful and it has been my honor to serve with Mr. Thames and Mr. Higginbotham and President Wright, who was a dear, sweet friend long before I even thought that I would ever serve on a city council, and, and Mayor McBrayer. It has been a great honor for me and I have learned so much. I came in in 2014 as an appointee like Patrick and felt like I had no clue what was happening and jumped right in and there were some wonderful people who helped me figure it out. So I am grateful for the time that I've had to spend with all of these people and the people that were here before and I'm so excited about the future and what, what the future holds, but I'm, I'm thankful for the time that I've had with y'all and just so proud of everything that we've accomplished. So thank y'all so much for your service. And I guess I'm going to be having my meeting at 2:00 AM the day before. Now, I guess I'll, how long do you think it's going to take with VIA for their presentation, y'all?
My gut is, I'm guessing maybe ten, fifteen minutes, not that long.
Okay, all right, well, then I.
Chris will be here and then they'll be here with Zoom a couple of months.
Some, okay, okay. Then I will, and I'm supposed to have Ron Thompson coming too, so I guess I just need to go ahead and.
Well, and we are, I mean, it's just if you want to, we are going to have meetings on the sixteenth, you know, because we are off schedule, so we're having a meeting.
Yeah, I think.
Depends on if you want to stack it.
Yeah, I think I'll, I'll just go ahead and schedule 4:15 on the ninth and then I'll ask Ron to come that following week.
For 4:15 on the.
4:15, yeah, 4:15 to 4:30.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Smith. Okay, President-elect, Mr. Wyatt.
Emphasize the last part.
It's coming soon, sir.
I don't want to belabor the point either, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't speak to each of the four of you. And I'll start with you, Mr. Mayor, because I, you, you mentioned in your comments that Homewood should be proud and I think you should be proud of what you've done. The difference in day one of your tenure to today is astounding and the, the difference in Homewood and what you have helped create, you deserve an immense amount of credit for that and I just want to thank you. I want to thank you as a resident of Homewood for what you've done for us. I want to thank you as a city councillor who got the privilege of working with you for the past six years or so and everything that you have done and taught me. And you should most definitely be proud of the work that you have done for this city and, and the shape that you are leaving it in. So thank you. As for the other three of you, you know, I was also appointed in the middle of a term and came on and there are probably two people that gave me as much advice as anybody else and that is Mr. Thames and Mr. Wright. Anytime I had a question about how to do something, what was going on, feeling dumb because I didn't understand whatever we were doing, the two of you were always there with good advice, good ideas. I, I appreciate the two of you more than you will ever know for me personally and my journey on city council, but also, again, just as a resident, for everything that you've done. Mike showed up a couple of years later and I'll never forget that Mike and I found out that we were both unopposed as we were sitting in a library board meeting. Back in whenever that was, 2016, and actually, that was where I first got to know Mike, was on the library board and, and worked with you there and then have enjoyed immensely working with you on council and appreciate all of the great work that you have done, the time and effort that everyone has put in. And one, one last additional note about Mr. Wright, you didn't sign up for this job. You were thrust into it and, and it is, it's, it's not an easy job. It is a difficult job, it is a time-consuming job and you stepped in and we never lost a beat. We picked right up where Mr. Limbaugh left us off and we just kept moving forward and that is not an easy task. And I greatly appreciate how you were leaving that chair. And while I agree with Mr. McCloskey, these jobs aren't easy, but you are making it easier for me to transition into that position because of everything that you have done and the grace with which you have done it with. So thank you, thank you to all of you. I have enjoyed working with you, you will all be missed greatly and it's going, it's going to be hard being up here without you. I haven't, I haven't really had to do that yet, so, so it will be different, but I, I'm also looking forward to working with everyone else, both old and new, as, as we move forward and we'll start that journey next week.
Thank you for those words, Mr. Wyatt. Ms. Andrews.
Am I the only one that's going to cry tonight?
My dear.
I knew this night was going to come and when I knew it was coming, I knew it was, I knew I was going to cry because of Peter Wright. I always knew that because I knew a long time ago, you were ready to set this down and I thought, what am I going to do without Peter Wright? So I just want to say thank you for everything, for everything that you did for me as a Ward Five councillor. You have been the most graceful president, the way you stepped into this role and it's like you were meant to do this and just, we're so grateful for you and, and the leadership that you've shown last year and I wish it would have been a longer term for you because you did such a great job. But I know, I know you and I know you're ready to play tennis and hang out with your family and I'm just so grateful that our families are so close so we could, so we could still be, and I'm still your councillor, so. Mike, I'm proud of you and I've just really enjoyed serving with you and getting to know you. Just wish the best for you and your family, we're going to miss you and please stay around. So Brett, I'm going to miss you so much, but you're not going anywhere because we're going to have lunch every week. Whether you want to or not. And I'm going to text you all the time and I'm going to irritate you. And I'm going to text you about every little thing and I'm going to ask every question and I'm going to annoy the crap out of you, but I just have loved working with you so much. God, your brain, I love watching your brain work and I love your big thoughts and your big plans and your ideas for the city and I know how much you love Homewood and I love your family so much and I'm so proud of the service that you've given us and I just so glad we've got to be such good friends because I'm just so happy I've got to serve you. And Mayor McBrayer, thank you for everything. You have so much to be proud of, what you've done with the city is incredible and we're, it's, it's just, the transformation is amazing. You know, my husband is not an easy man to impress and the first time that he spoke with you, he, he to this day tells that story about how much you impressed upon him and I hope you're proud, I hope you know how much we love you and nobody can leave without a picture. We got to take a picture. We got to get a group picture. And anyway, I love you all, I love everyone in this room and I've just been so honored to work with all of you and this has been an amazing council, so thanks. We got to wear our face masks, face masks though.
Especially distance, Rick.
Council Andrews, thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Harden, everything was good before you arrived.
I don't know, but I don't know when this is over where I'm headed. I do appreciate all those who are here, I understand after just being here a year how hard it is to be on this council and to do all that you got to do and the fire hose that you're on all the time trying to understand the issues and you, you really sometimes don't totally understand them and hope that your fellow city councillors understand them well enough to get you to teach them and help you through them, but grateful for all of you, especially those leaving. We will miss you, it's been a year of, of a very cohesive council, in my opinion, and I look forward to the next four years and I'm sure we'll have some disagreements as, as Mike talks about, but we, we should work together and walk out of here friends, even if we don't agree on everything, but I do know how hard so many of y'all have done, worked and so much has happened. And I actually remember when Mayor McBrayer was running and, and how important I saw it that he went that first time back in 2012, that things seemed to be not in, going in the best direction and I thought, we really got to get Scott in there. And I only knew him because he walked up to my house and knocked on my door when I lived on Benita and he never forgot me and I never forgot him, but the, the city has totally changed. I grew up in a small town in Texas called Houston with about seven million people these days. And, you know, we, we lived in a great area and I don't know really what happened, maybe it was the schools and that's why it is so important, I know Scott's always focused on keeping good schools, but my mother's house, when it sold, I mean, it was like, God, that's all we're getting for the house because the neighborhood had so gone down. So we should be very proud of, of the new young people coming here and all the things people are doing in our city to their houses and the money being spent because it's just a good thing going on here. As I've told people over and over and over, in spite of what you read on Facebook, we're doing great and it's to thank all you guys up here that, that we, for why we're doing so great and everybody involved, Mike and Melody, and it's just a great city and, and the city council has had a lot to do with that of making good decisions. So thank you, I'm grateful. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. I just need 30 minutes, okay? Don't worry, Mike, I'm not going to do 30. Let me thank my colleagues first. Mike, it's been, it's been a joy these past four years and you have really served your ward well, you have handled some really tough issues and I'm grateful to have had the opportunity to serve with you. Mr. Thames, same goes to you on how you have spearheaded so many several projects and you took on that time and you took on that commitment and it is so admired and it's so noticed and, and boy, what a transformation from when you started to what you accomplished. And, you know, and I think you're an example of one person can make a difference. Did you not learn that? I mean, one person can make a difference and that's the beauty of some of these projects that if you don't take on, you know, take the bull by the horns, it won't get done. And you, you've taught a lot of fellow council members that example, take bull by the horns if you want to get it done. So thank you for that. Mayor, I don't know where to begin, particularly this last year, having really to work closely with you on so many issues and, boy, it has been, it has been a tough year and, but it's been a, it's been a fascinating year and, boy, I've been, I have really enjoyed working closely with you this, this past year and what we've had to deal with, some of which folks even here don't even understand and, but there were some, really some tough days there and I really treasure the times being in the trench on some of these trenches, on some of these issues in that time and I really treasure what has happened over the 10 years that I got to serve of your 12-year term and to see what happened, what's happened to the city. I mean, I'm not going to, you know, start marking off the stuff, everyone here knows it, but the projects, and I'm really particularly proud of the last four years and what got accomplished with this council on a very tough, you know, agenda, if you can say that for a four-year term, but a tough agenda of items that really has succeeded. We have succeeded, we have served our citizens well and I really hope that serves us in a, a good example of the new council. Let me thank some people if I can very quickly. I do need to thank my wife and my family, as some of you all have mentioned and all you all know, you know, what a sacrifice and she let me do this, okay? And my kids let me do this and I'm grateful for that and for the time. I'm grateful for the voters in Ward Five who voted me in, for those who have gone through an election, unlike some of us who have never gone through an election. By the way, he needs his pay docked a little bit, so, because of that. I really also want to thank Jackie Langlo, who spearheaded getting me first appointed to this position and, and again, the voters voting me in and keeping me in here, I'm really grateful and, and really had no idea what a ride it was going to be, but it's really has been a fun ride the last 10 years. The department heads from Berkeley to Mr. Cobb, Greg Cobb, to, gosh, I can't even think of all their names, but who runs Fleet Maintenance, who does everything perfect. Gordon, thank you, sorry, Gordon, I don't, we don't see you up here because, but, and just one department after another, JJ sitting in the back who would answer my phone calls and my texts and, oh my gosh, JJ, I'm still going to call you, so you're, and you're going to have to figure out how to get it done some way, somehow, and I'm very grateful for that. And let me pause a second for, for Melody and Mike. Melody's just untouchable, she just is and, my dear, this city is so lucky to have you in that seat and these two are really going to be lucky to have you in that seat and they know it and I don't need to tell them that and thank you.
That's all I have to say.
And thank you for continuing to serve. Now, just a few quick words about Mr. Mike Kendrick, our city attorney who I've had the chance to work with for 10 years. Everybody here knows about Mr. Kendrick and what he does and what he can do and how he does it. And I can use that word, but there's just no one better. And there's a reason he's been serving this city for such a long time, because he's good at it. He's very good at it and I would relish the opportunity to dig into details on that with, with people and Mike, this city would not be what it is without your help and your assistance. Yes, you'll give us, you know, direction and guidance, it's so valuable, but what Mike also does that people don't know is he won't tell us sometimes because out of his, his pure ethics of letting the council make the decisions. And I know each and every one of you up here is like, well, Mike, you know, thought, no, well, that's your, that's your decision and sometimes you want to shake them a little bit, but, but Mike, what you have done, I mean, over the past years of your service is just due to be commended and I'm grateful that you are with this city and I'm very hopeful you're going to continue with this city. I strongly encourage it and look forward to that service and I'm very grateful to have you as a friend and just grateful for the experiences we've gone through and so thank you for that. And most importantly, guys, really this last four years, it is y'all, okay? It's Mrs. Smith, it's Dr. Jones, it's Mr. Harden, it's Mrs. Andrews, it's President-elect Wyatt, certainly to be, soon to be President-elect, it's soon to be Mayor McCloskey, Mr. Higginbotham, Mr. Thames, Mr. Gualtney and Mr. Wolverton. Boy, what a four years, it really has been, what we have done and what we have accomplished in this, you know, unison of a council is so, to me, to be admired, I'm never going to forget it. Councils just don't, 11 people, I mean, give me a break, people, I mean, we're, we just, you know, people sort of get upset because we don't have any, you know, more nay votes sometimes. We, we, it's because we all care and, and boy, I've learned so much from you all and just very grateful. I'm also very grateful for y'all's indulgence and your support in letting me serve as president. You know, I got thrust into it, but you got, you guys didn't have any choice either, so we forget that, so y'all had to put up with me, including Mr. Procedure over here, so, but, so thank y'all for that and, and I'm very excited for the new leadership, I'm very excited about the new council coming in, I'm very excited. new leadership. I'm very excited about the, um, new council coming in. Uh, I'm very excited about Mayor McCluskey gonna take the reins here. And I'm equally excited about, uh, our new president. And, uh, and so, um, I look forward to you having the chance to sit in this position. And by golly, I'm gonna walk this over here.
[laughing] By golly, you take responsibility for it.
Let me take a picture. Hold on, hold on. Hold on. Photo op, photo op. Hey, and I got one thing real quick for y'all to adjourn. Whoever adjourns, go.
Speak up.
I gotta wait till you-
I'm done.
Okay, before you adjourn, real quick. And, um, I started the evening off on a serious note because I, I felt led to say what I wanted to say and let everybody know how much we appreciate everybody that's leaving. Uh, change is difficult. Um, but I know Homewood's gonna, uh, rise to the occasion. And we're all gonna, uh, get there together. And I appreciate every, everybody that's leaving and everything that's said. But just so I can have a little bit of just laughter. Hopefully, you'll, you'll laugh with me on this. So, I was going Wednesday, Thursday and Friday to the city clerk's training. I've been trying to work on this certified municipal clerk certification. And Brian has it right up there.
Yeah.
And, and so, um, recently, thank you. But, um, in the city clerk's world, you can have every alphabet behind your name. But if you don't have C and C, you are just really not considered up there. So, I got my MBA recently in that. But I think I was more happy about that. [laughing] And I made Robert listen to Pomp and Circumstance all the way back from Minnesota. And he actually sent it to all my staff. And they were like, "Oh, great. Thanks for the warning." So, just a little bit of humor. But I am now certified municipal clerk. So, thank y'all.
We stand adjourned.